The vic goes down, I'm just going. But yes, I don't know.
This is why Joey didn't insist on it. She knew it was a chore. She already knew.
I went back there and talked to her for about two minutes and she was gone. She didn't even realize her light was out. I would be sitting in there.
Just talking.
Hey Joey, just letting you know I got this. My parents really killed my mind. I really thought I was going to an emergency room with my father on Thursday. He looked like that.
Do you think it was a sh-? There's a bad stomach bug going around too.
I don't know. I don't know. And he doesn't take care of his body at all. So I went back there to talk to you today. And I talked to you for about thirty seconds. Didn't even realize your light was on. I was like, Joey, what do you think about that? I said, fine, don't talk to me.
She doesn't care.
Oh, wait a minute. And then when I walked back, I guess Louise had heard everything. And Louise was just done. I'm telling you, my parents coming in.
I think we need to suspend Rules Matter. Item to the agenda to replace recommendation for Mr. Batson over the County Highway Department. That's one item they speak changed on the agenda name. So a motion to amend the agenda, if I add that item would be in order.
Solomon.
Mr. Solomon.
You've got to suspend the rules.
Suspend rules. Motion to suspend rules.
Motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Second, all voters, suspend rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, rules are suspended. Need to add one item to the agenda that's listed in the agenda. Agenda, a motion to approve, the agenda with that automatic would be. Douglas.
Day.
Second, Mr. Bales, if you would, vote with your advices, yes if you're in favor, no if you're against.
I'll vote yes, by the way.
Thank you, bud.
If you will.
May you say yes.
Mr. Scarlett.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas. Mr. Carmichael.
He's not there.
He's not there? No. Okay. Passed by majority, the agenda is amended. Next item is approval of amendments. We can do both together. We have the regular quarterly amendments from January the nineteenth. We have a special college session from March twenty-second. Motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Bales.
Mr. Coleman, second. Any corrections or amendments to the amendments? Here ain't none all in favor of yes. Your opposed vote, no.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Amendments are approved. That brings us to appearance of citizens. The first citizen is Jim Stroden. If you please come to the podium, state your name and address, sir, you'd have three minutes.
I just hope you, excuse me, all you commissioners can see it from the people's eye and vote against this machiacity that they want to build on our beautiful life. Please think, if you live there, would you want this next one to you? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, Ed McFlure. If you give us your name and address, you'd have three minutes, sir.
Okay, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my business here in the county and city of Danredge. My name's Ed McFlure. My agency is Statewide Insurance Group of America. I've been an agent with Life Insurance Company of Alabama in the county for about twenty years. We presently have ninety-one policies in Jefferson County Finance Building. My question is to the finance director here, why was I not allowed to see new and existing employees this year? I saw employees in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, no one in twenty twenty due to the COVID virus, and no one in twenty twenty-one. An email was sent out. I was not informed of this. Not able to see my clients in the county. I had an indirect email come to me informing me that there are no more payroll deduction slots for me in this county. I'm a citizen of this county. I've lived in Shady Grove area for over thirty years. My agency is in Danredge on Highway ninety-two. It's been established there since nineteen seventy, for seventeen years. I've always been there for my employees of this county. They are my friends and my neighbors. Many in this room know me. I know of no claim that my company, Life Insurance Company of Alabama, has not paid in seventeen years. I have an impeccable record. I'm requesting that my clients stay on payroll deductions and have access to new and existing employees and policyholders to make changes to their policies. Really isn't this about what employees want? Competition is good and the employee should have the opportunity to choose the best product for them and their family. Having only one company available to them offered by the Section one twenty-five Cafeteria Plan administrators that come from Nashville, to the best of my knowledge, is not great. It's not the American way. Now, payroll deductions will stop according to the finance director in the mail I got secondhand in July. That means all my clients will be put under recognition. My future clients need an option to have a better product possibly than what's available now. I have a guaranteed issue disability now available in the county. Where every new employee not seen last year or this year is eligible guaranteed issue through my company and my agency for two thousand a month. It's because we're pulling a job off, the job pays the dish, the work is done. Thank you.
Say three comments. Stephen Smith. If you give us your name and address, sir. You have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Stephen Smith. And then at three seven six six I N U Road, District Eight. Three minutes is really not enough time to have an in-depth discussion of meaningful issues. So instead, I'm going to give you my personal, some would say selfish, perspective and response to the coming yes and no vote relative to approving a substantial amount of money for a substantial number of years that we are told will not create a need for increased taxes for decades and in a sense is being offered as a panacea for the ills of our county school system. With no disrespect to the parties involved, Langdon Potts, Dr. Johnston, the school board, parents, capital, community, we have received historically precious little attention from the county. I'm speaking on the half, on behalf of myself and my wife, the scene. I can't imagine that the expenditure of the proposed millions of dollars will benefit our lives specifically in a meaningful way. I made a reference to my selfish perspective. One of the definitions of selfish is holding one's self-interest as the standard for decision-making. And if that is the case, then depending on our individual perspectives, we're all selfish about any specific given issue. So therefore, I urge the commission to exercise caution to avoid repeating an undesirable history relative to school system debt and vote no when time comes. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Next, David Damon-Fort, former sheriff. Welcome back in our midst, also former Marietta Comerage was not with, but we back again.
Folks, I just want to reiterate a lot of the papers we were having to say. He was selling insurance when I became sheriff, some since nineteen ninety-eight. And he was selling that before. We never had a complaint. The only problem I've got with, I would ask the question, what benefits of going to this plan is for the employees? What are they going to get out of this? Are they going to get a better product? Is it going to be cheaper? Or is it just easier for the finance office to take care of it? I think we should work with the taxpayers and the employees. And also, if the finance director doesn't have it, what if Mr. McFlure has to sell his business now? He deals with Danredge, he deals with a lot of entities. I don't know how many counties he works with in the state of Tennessee. I know it's several. But if you go buy that building up there where the statewide interest is, also his wife has a business in this county located in the third, second district. So I just ask y'all to, you know, think about it. Maybe he can talk to Mr. Potts, maybe he can do something. I think Mr. McFlure was welcome competition. Not only did they take away his ability, they took away Aflac and another company's ability to develop their product to the employees as a unit or whatever. But I also like to commend the sheriff, he's doing a great job. I think he's, he's an asset to the county. And just glad to be back up here, but I'm glad I'm not a sheriff anymore. Having said that, thank y'all for letting me speak and have a good evening, Mr. Bane, Mr. Two Commissioners. And I'll talk to you later.
Thanks, Sheriff. Ms. Meredith. Macklin. If you give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Macklin Meredith. I'm at four thirty-four Buckingham Drive, Jefferson City. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of Jefferson Elementary School. My initial question is, when is the most recent time that each commissioner has toured Jefferson Elementary School? The last six months, the last year or so, or even the public or the community? Would you allow your child or your grandchild or a family member to attend Jefferson Elementary right now? Think about those things. I am the PTO co-president and I currently have a third grader at Jefferson Elementary School. And the state of our school is in great despair. Our students' health, well-being, and overall safety is being jeopardized. Our children, our future, deserves an equitable education. The U.S. Department of Education, National Center on Safety Supported Learning Environments says that children have the right to a safe environment, meaning a safe physical environment. The physical environment is relative to both student's achievement and student behavior. Jefferson Elementary students' right to an equitable education is also at stake. Jefferson Elementary students do not have the same learning or safety environment as other schools in our district right now, such as Danredge or now for. Our renovation will not suffice. The safety concerns include lead poisoning, asbestos causing cancer in our children, the raw sewage leading to bacterial infections, floria, mold resulting in respiratory issues, and termites. Our children's health is at stake and simply remodeling or re-innovating will not remove all of these extensive problems. Land is owned by the school district and the fairgrounds are renting that property. So possibly Jefferson- So possibly Jefferson, excuse me, a tri-county fair could be something that the district could look at if that is a concern. But I fully believe that Mr. Day, the administration, the teachers, Dr. Johnston, the School Board has done everything for our children to provide a safe environment. Now it's your turn to vote yes to help our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara Campbell. You give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Sheriff, thank you. I'm Tara Campbell at thirteen oh eight Jessica Loop, Jefferson City, fifty district. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My family and I moved here to this area in two thousand eleven. I became the envy of teacher, teaching friends across the state when I was hired to teach here. Jefferson County School District is well-known for their dynamic efforts to educate their future citizens. The fact that I knew about you and your schools before moving here speaks to two things. First, your teachers and students are getting the job done. Second, it proves that former or past county commission and school boards have worked together as a team. So I thank you for those past teams. As a parent, a voter, a taxpaying teacher, I was frankly saddened and embarrassed by last month's vote. There was a denial of the need. Where was the team effort that I'd heard so much about? Where was the standard of looking up to the Jefferson County expectations that I'd heard so many speak of? As a teacher, I would have given you sadly a failing grade. But good news, teachers like readings. So tonight is your chance to make sure that you correct that decision. Vote yes for J E S. As a voting, taxpaying teacher at Jefferson Elementary School who has suffered cancer while working there, I have a question for you. Who among you tonight would be willing to spend two years or more countless hours, money going to doctor, only to be told that you deserve surgery, perhaps heart surgery, open heart surgery, and instead of going to the hospital immediately? A, you go home, diet and exercise, maybe even pray. B, go home, find your own needle thread and band-aid. C, go home and do nothing and blame the doctor. I dare say none of the above would be your answer for tonight's question because you love your family and your future. Now is our turn at Jefferson Elementary School. My colleagues in former administration and current administration have waited patiently through many rebuilds and renovations in the county that were needed at the time. There's no question about Jefferson Elementary School and being in need. We need it, you know it, if you've been there. The question is, how much longer are we going to have to wait? We waited through all of these bills patiently. It's our turn. Teachers, staff, and most importantly, our students, their families deserve better effort from you tonight. We deserve a safe, healthy learning environment. Our little Elks are our future of our dynamic county, which so many people are flocking to from all over the United States. So I implore you to do what is right. Do what you have been voted to do and paid to do. Keep our Jefferson County, Jefferson Elementary School, a leader and an envy across the state. Vote yes for J E S. Thank you.
Thank you. Alana, thank you, Carol.
My name is Alana Carroll. I live at fourteen forty-nine Royal Drive, Jefferson City. I have three children at Jefferson Elementary School, two boys in fourth grade, a daughter in first grade, and I have a fourth that will attend in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year as a kindergarten. I have my master's degree in education, page six, from Carson Emmons, and I taught as a teacher at Alpha Primary before deciding to stay at home to raise my children. As our children started approaching school age, we had several choices. We found school, we could send them to Lakeway, or they could go to school with me at Alpha and I continue teaching, or we could send them to Jefferson Elementary School. And we took the chance on J E S, and that was the best chance that we have taken by our children. My children have been loved on very well by the teachers at J E S, and the teachers have gone above and beyond what has been asking them to meet the academic needs and physical needs of my children. My hope is that the building will meet the standards of the professionalism of these teachers. I don't think that a remodel will do it, and this is why I say that. It has only been until recently that I had known the condition of the building. Last year during COVID, parents were not even allowed into the building at all. And it's only recently that I've learned of the conditions that it is in. I don't know why, we have not known. But last week, my daughter came home from school on Monday and she said that she had extra recess. And I thought, oh, that's great, she had extra recess, it was sunny that day. And it was only because that a teacher friend told me that there were termites in the school and the eggs had hatched that she couldn't even go to her PE class because the gym was in such a state. I wouldn't have known about the raw sewage pouring through the hallways that my boys ran if they hadn't told me about the smell and I asked questions. I did not know that these things were going on. No one told me that Mr. Day often went to the boiler room to add another brick or a piece of paper because of the shifting foundation. No one told me that there's mold and mildew problems and that the boiler room was flooding. No one told me that there's mice and snakes that come into the building because of the cracks and holes and gaps in the walls and doors. There's a good majority of the time spent from these teachers and this administration taking care of building problems when they should be attending to my children and other children in our school. They shouldn't be spending half of their time taking care of boiler room problems or technology problems because of old breaker systems or trying to find extension cords because of the lack of outlets. They should be caring for our children. I know that the money is a problem and that remodeling is a consideration, but my concern is my children. Where are my children going to go if you're remodeling? Are they going to be sent in cordables? Will they be there when asbestos is pulled up from the school building? Will they be exposed to lead and the problems that come with removal? Where will they go when the cafeteria is being renovated? How will they get hot meals? My concern is the children. The land is already owned and it just seems like it is a no-brainer to build a new building. The children deserve it, the staff deserve it, and they go above and beyond everything that's called of them to do to care for the needs of the children at Jefferson Elementary. So I ask you, thank you.
You can finish your second.
Seth Volker, Jackson Real Estate Auction, office is at fourteen eighteen Russell Avenue, Jefferson City. He fell as the project manager couldn't be here tonight. I mostly just wanted to make myself available if there were any questions about the rezoning for the property on Chestnut Hill. If there were any questions for the Commission that I could shed some light on that would be helpful. I know one Commissioner had sent in a question about fire safety. I spoke with someone at the Fire Department today, they said they've got a hundred and fifteen-foot ladder that can handle a fire up to comfortably eighty to a hundred feet up. And we wouldn't be anywhere near it. If we were at about a four-story building, we'd be somewhere around fifty feet in the air and that's about it. That was one question I knew had come from the Commission. If there are any other questions that I could help out with.
You can make citizens' comments, but not solicit questions unless a Commissioner would like to speak to me.
Understood, okay. As I said, I want to make myself available. Thank you, that's all I have.
This, this, go ahead.
I was the Commissioner that called him today.
Okay.
And the discussion I had with him, the building, he said was going to be six to eight stories tall. And that's when I called the Fire Chief at Danridge to ask because I told him there were, my concern was, I thought in town of Danridge, it could only be so many stories, which once I talked to the Fire Chief, I called him back and explained it to him, this is not in Danridge city limits, but it's right beside it. And so my concern is, if we approve this the way it is, there's no way for me to know how tall the building is and our planning, our zoning plan does not, to my knowledge, limit the height of buildings in the county. So I was the one that called and I don't know what his final, how tall the building would be because that's not what I was told earlier today.
Speaking specifically towards that, he is in the G R with food poisoning. I think it's conceivable that maybe he wasn't thinking very clearly when the question was I think he may have, in the moment, given support.
Good evening, Commissioners. It is an honor and a privilege to speak before you tonight.
What is your address, ma'am?
Yes, my address is fifteen twenty-four Pearl Avenue. I come to you tonight as a parent of two children of Jefferson Elementary School, and I come to you longer as a taxpayer. And I have a question for everyone in this room. How many of us take pride in our homes? I know that my family certainly does. In fact, we made a very purposeful choice to live within the Jefferson Elementary School district. You see, we are a multi-generational J E S family. It was extremely important to my husband and I that we pass down his precious memories of being a little elk to his own children. Last year, our daughter Katie was so sick with a horrific cough that she was taken to the doctor two times a week for at least three to four months. She would cough so strongly that she couldn't catch her breath. We had teachers texting, both my husband and I from school, stating that her teacher's door was closed, their door was closed, and yet they could still hear Katie coughing. Now our kindergartner's son LJ, who has never been a sickly child, has the exact same cough. They cough to the point that they struggle to catch their breath. And many of the teachers and administrators are here today that can testify to that. On Friday, our children had a distant learning day. My children did not participate in that because they were at the doctor for several hours. On Friday, my husband and I were told that it could possibly be, it meaning their cough could be due to environmental issues and that my children's doctor's office has seen an increase in Jefferson Elementary School students. So what may you ask are the environmental issues at Jefferson Elementary School? Asbestos, mold, lead paint, feces from critters that run amok, raw sewage running down the hall. We literally have the very best teachers and administration staff in America teaching at this school building that Jefferson County Schools has deemed to be in the worst condition. We believe that because this will be of no cost to the taxpayers, then a new building is critical for the health and safety of our students. It is the duty of this body of elected officials to offer a new building. It is the future of our students to have a new building, and it is also the legacy of our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That's all of our citizens' comments that we have written. I know some Commissioners have some emails that they want to do. If y'all would give me just a minute and we kind of put this on pause and honor the families that we have, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just turned in a form as well.
What is your name?
Sharon Fox. I gave it to, I gave it to my development.
Go ahead, camera.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, you did. My, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Hello, thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sharon Fox. My address is twenty-six forty-nine Gilliam Circle. I am the parent of a fourth grader at Jefferson Elementary School. I have worked with a lot of schools in my life, in my career, I should say, as a psychologist. And I will say that Jefferson Elementary School staff have been extremely supportive, encouraging, and willing to make, meet the individual needs of their students. It makes you feel safe as a parent, leaving my child in such great and caring hands. There's a strong sense of community and familyhood unique to the school, and in all honesty, I would not want my daughter to go anywhere else during her elementary school years. One of the unique and wonderful aspects of the school is the STEAM program, which my daughter had participated in during the years it has been offered since she was in kindergarten. This program has enabled students to get extra learning in science, technology, engineering, math, and arts. It is a wonderful opportunity for students to not only improve on their learning, but also their academic skills and performance in new and innovative ways. I think it would be a disservice to not have this program available to the students. Building a new Jefferson Elementary School would enable the program not only to continue, but would afford them a safer environment in which to participate and enjoy this learning experience. The community at Jefferson Elementary School has felt like more than a school, and I want to express my strong support in favor of the construction of a new building. The fact that it will not increase property taxes to the public, it will enable the students to have a safer environment in which to continue growing and learning is mutually beneficial to the students, the staff, and the community. I remember when Mount Corbin Patriot Academy School was first built and the students began attending. There was a sense of confidence and pride the students took in who attended those schools. My daughter and I already have a sense of pride in knowing that she attends Jefferson Elementary. And I strongly believe that this same sense of pride will be enhanced for those who currently attend the school as well as for future students. The staff and students deserve a new and safe building to continue building this community. One day, they will be making decisions for us, and their education is essential to help in that process. Commissioners, this is not a want, this is a need. It is urgent. I urge you to please do this and to please do it now for the health, safety, and educational environment of our children. If you value the education of our children at all, please don't put a band-aid on this school. J E S is the best. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, it's okay with involving those of you that have emails. If we could just take that up right after we do our honorary proclamations for the families who are here. And Mr. Hernan's going to read those. And the first one would be Marvin Watkins' family, if you would come to the podium. We wanted to do this sooner, but due to COVID restraints, we apologize if this has taken so long, and we're going to honor your love of him. Mr. Hernan.
An honorary resolution to commemorate and honor Marvin Wesley Watkins for his public service to the citizens of Jefferson County. Whereas since its founding, Jefferson County has been served by many fine and praiseworthy individuals that have provided honorable and worthy service to the citizens of Jefferson County. Whereas Marvin Wesley Watkins was a lifelong resident of Jefferson County and had a love for building hot rods, tractors, and tractor pulling and donating to charities who serve children in need. And whereas Marvin Wesley Watkins has served his wonderful family as a husband and father and friend to many near and far. Whereas Marvin Wesley Watkins was a member of Lake Shore Baptist Church. Whereas Marvin Wesley Watkins was an active member of various fair boards, including the Jefferson County Fair Board and numerous antique tractor pulling clubs across Tennessee. And whereas Marvin Wesley Watkins was a faithful employee being hired to the Jefferson County Maintenance on September the sixteenth, two thousand two, transferring to the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department on a litter control program on October first, two thousand six, then transferring to the Jefferson County Highway Department on July twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen. Now therefore, be it resolved, Jefferson County Commission, that we publicly commemorate and declare our appreciation for Marvin Wesley that we publicly commemorate and declare our appreciation for Marvin Wesley Watkins, who has invested himself in the lives of the people during his service, his years of public service. We trust his legacy of service will serve as a model for all others who aspire to serve the citizens of this county. Adopted this nineteenth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Next would be Sarah Wine Webb family. Ms. Webb's family.
An honorary resolution to commemorate and honor Sarah Wine Webb for her public service to the citizens of Jefferson County. Whereas Sarah Wine Webb served the residents of Jefferson County, Tennessee with dedication, integrity, and uncompromising principles for forty-five years. First serving in the county clerk's office, and then elected as registered deans for twenty years. Whereas Sarah Wine Webb not only loved her special family, but loved God and demonstrated her true Christian spirit by serving others. And whereas Sarah Wine Webb is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service and gratefully acknowledges its exemplary spirit, outstanding leadership, and commitment. And whereas Sarah Wine Webb was loved, admired, and respected by her family and many friends. As an elected official, she served in an ethical and professional manner. And be it further resolved that the Jefferson County Legislative Body commemorates the spirit and dedicated and cherished colleague who worked tirelessly serving Jefferson County. And be it further resolved that this honorary resolution be presented to the family of Sarah Wine Webb, and a copy be spread across the minutes of the county commission meaning to be a permanent record of thanks and gratitude to Sarah Wine Webb. Adopted this nineteenth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
Last now for the family. Mr. Condon Batson, please come to the podium.
I'm going to personally thank the county for making my dad happy on the cheese season throughout each month. He definitely looked forward to it.
Mr. Hernan.
An honorary resolution to commemorate and honor Charles Condon Batson for his public service to the citizens of Jefferson County. Whereas since its founding, Jefferson County has been served by many fine and praiseworthy individuals that have provided honorable and worthy service to the citizens of Jefferson County. Whereas Charles Condon Batson was a lifelong resident of Jefferson County. Whereas Charles Condon Batson has served his wonderful family as a husband, father, and grandfather and friend to many. And whereas Charles Condon Batson was a veteran of the U.S. Army of Jacks Hercules Missile Battalion, and as a headquarter, he served as an officer. Whereas Charles Condon Batson was a member of the Brazelton Masonic Lodge and a member of Lawson's United Methodist Church. And whereas Charles Condon Batson has served as a member of the Jefferson County Highway Commission from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and six. Served as a member of the Jefferson County Commission from two thousand and six to two thousand and fourteen. Served on the Jefferson County Regional Planning Commission from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty-one. And served as a member of the Jefferson County Highway Commission again from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-one, where he was chairman from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one. Therefore, and be it resolved by the Jefferson County Commission that we publicly commemorate and declare our appreciation for Charles Condon Batson, who has invested himself in the lives of the people during his years of public service. We trust his legacy of service will serve as a model for all others who aspire to serve the citizens of this county. Adopted this nineteenth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you all very much. So we have several commissioners with some emails that they request that have been sent to them. Request that they read them. There's a possibility that you may be able to combine those emails and give us a general idea. Tell us how many you got. For the sake of time, it would be great. I'll leave it up to the commissioners. Ms. Thomas, I see you with a wave and a hand full of open right now.
I have five emails, and...
Do you turn your microphone on? I think it's off.
I have five emails, and they all talk about the conditions at Jefferson Elementary School. And they all support the building of a new Jefferson Elementary School. And in lieu of reading them out loud, I am going to ask that they be made part of the official record.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray. Mr. Chairman, I have one email, and it's about being extremely vocal on my opinion about the school. I'm going to read this one because it's a different point of view than I have, but it is my constituent. And it's addressed to me, Marcus Reed. I most definitely support the plan to build a new school for Jefferson County Elementary children. I am saddened at the bad conditions our teachers and men and children have to be in for over seven hours a day. These problems are bad for their health, safety, and education. This is unacceptable. I understand that this building is in the worst condition in the county. We elected and trusted you as commissioner to spend our taxpayer money wisely. I am very disappointed for my grandchildren to go to school every day in that building. Financially, for both now and for future generations, it seems well worth twenty million to get a new building now that will not need repairs for many years. It does not seem worth eighteen million to renovate. Renovations always end up either costing more than promised or not being able to get everything that we want. As a taxpayer, grandmother, and former teacher, I firmly believe that education of our children should be a high priority for our tax money. The current building is not safe or acceptable. I am appalled here of no working sprinkler system, no wheelchair accessibility, sewage water in the building, mice, snakes flooding, leaky roof, lead in the water, gym floor not safe, and the list goes on. Please do the right thing and vote yes for a new school building for our children. Please do not disappoint. Linda Rother. Mr. Chairman, I would like to just make one comment. This letter directed to me says that you trust me as a commissioner to spend your money wisely. That's what I want to do. That's what I desire to do. I've had grandchildren go to Jefferson Elementary School. And we had another teacher send an email, and she mentioned like a bathroom door had been in disrepair for twelve years. I have a granddaughter getting ready to graduate from Carson Newman. She was in that school when that door was like that. Please understand, I've been through the building twice. I know how terrible it is. But there are five other elementary schools in this county. So I take my vote very seriously. I take it to heart, and I will do what I think my conscience tells me to do in the best interest of the majority of citizens in Jefferson County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Laman, do you have a...
No, I don't.
Other emails to be read? If not, we're moving on with our agenda. Mr. Hernan, believe it or not, has no additions to the notice of bonds. Motion to approve the ballot is your button.
I don't want it. Turn that thing off and try to call the board.
We try.
His button hadn't worked in a long time.
John there made the motion, and I don't know. I think...
I'll say.
You can go ahead and vote yes for approval, no if you're against. Motion passes. Next item is reports from elected officials. My report is, if we could combine, there's a replacement on the Jefferson Royal Oversight Board, Lord Hurden, for a continued position pursuant to hope. A solid West Regional Planning Board, Jonathan Mixon, Arlie Ball, and Jimmy Henry. It's okay, a motion to approve these nominations as a whole would be in order. Motion carries. Next item is hopefully self-explanatory. The county used to have a long-range planning committee or commission. And this is taken from that resolution. It's a recommendation from the mayor to reestablish or establish the long-range planning committee as a standing committee. Committee shall be comprised of five county commissioners. Members shall serve two-year terms, nominated by the nominated committee and confirmed by county commission. Committee will consider strategic long-range plans for the county, including but not limited to economic and industrial development. This committee would interface with other organizations known to take long-range studies for the benefit of the county. This committee is authorized to organize and make presentations in the full county commission and others on subjects concerning county commission. This would be an advisory committee and would meet on an as-needed basis, and that's from Resolution two thousand and seven dash forty-six. Have a motion by Mr. Byrd, second by Mr. Bales. Any discussion? Here you are. If you're in favor of establishing this committee, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Motion passes. Next item is a, well, you might say once-in-a-lifetime committee. It's a Jefferson County two-hundred-and-thirty-year celebration committee. Monumental event, historic event for our county. We don't need to let it just pass by without making mention of it. So it's a recommendation from the mayor to establish a celebration committee as an ad hoc committee. This committee shall be comprised of three county commissioners and two members from the public. And unless the mayor nominates members to be confirmed by county commission, the committee will prepare and plan a celebration of Jefferson County's two-hundred-and-thirtieth year as a county. This committee will interface with other organizations, community groups, and other governments to celebrate birthday in Jefferson County. Motion by Ms. Hupaker, second by Mr. Byrd. Discussion. Seeing no requests to speak. You vote yes if you're in favor, no if you're against. Motion passes. Next item, we talked about in the work session, is a recommendation for the wheel tax compliance officer, the supervision of that, to be reassigned to the county clerk. We still have a wheel tax collection officer, compliance officer. This would simply move under clerk and Mr. Hernan. I went back to the resolutions as the parliamentarian asked. And it used to be under the sheriff's department. It used to be under the clerk. Went back to sheriff's department. The wheel tax compliance committee was bought away with, and it was put under the budget committee for control. So... A motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Bales. Discussion. Request to speak.
What's the sheriff's?
It's under the...
It's under the committee now.
It's under county commission as supervision. But when it started out as sheriff, it didn't round the loop. I have a request to speak. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Motion carries. That brings us down to discussion, polishing procedure. Mr. Fagan, you asked to bring that up, and I thought the appropriate place would be here. You have the floor, sir.
I don't have a microphone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, after our last couple of meetings of this and discussion with regards to who could put what on the agenda and when, and who can make what types of motions and when, it'd keep my curiosity. So I refer back to our rules of procedure. Pretty good pressure, quite honestly. I haven't been in them in quite a while. And so I thought I would share a couple of things that are pertinent to what we're discussing. Regarding to putting things on the agenda, it implies in Section F, Rule Two, that any commissioner, if they contact the clerk before then, can add something to the agenda. So if Ms. Thomas asks for something to be asked for, asks for something to be put on the agenda at a meeting where you're present, then I think if longer than, before noon, Tuesday, the week before the meeting, it goes on the agenda. Now, if this body doesn't want that to be on the agenda, they can amend the agenda when it comes time to approve it for the meeting. The same would be the case for any one of us wanting to add something to the agenda. And if we miss that Tuesday deadline, we can still get something on the agenda if we just have to finish the meeting and get a two-thirds vote. With regard to actions, bringing motions, our rules only speak to rescinding actions. They do not speak directly to renewing or reconsidering actions. So therefore, we would rely on Robert Rule of Order. When rescinding an action, that would be something that was adopted at a previous meeting, and you wanted to change it or get rid of it. If you advertise that in advance, it takes the majority. If you don't, it takes a supermajority. As far as bringing a motion that has already failed, which I think with the discussion going on, and it was indicated that Ms. Thomas would not be able to bring the same motion. As I understand, renewing a motion at a subsequent meeting, she can renew, bring the exact same motion, because we don't have anything in our rules of procedure to prevent that. If she were trying to bring it forward in the same meeting, she would not be able to because she did not vote on the prevailing side. But in a subsequent meeting, that doesn't matter. So I just wanted to share those with you, and also note that there are a few other items that I was reading here that, in my opinion, need some clarification. So I would like to ask that this be on our agenda for the July meeting, because I'd like to bring in some motions, which will take a two-thirds vote in this body to amend these.
Mr. Goff.
I'd just like to add, and Mr. Fagan, you may, if we get into this deeper. I appreciate the information. If I remember correctly, a previous commission passed a resolution that basically says if you want it voted on, you have to present it at the workshop, or it can't be on the agenda for the voting meeting. And I think the intent was that commission doesn't get information laid in their hands at the voting meeting and have little or no time to review it. So I just wanted to bring that up for everybody who may not know. And anyone who wants to can verify, make sure I'm right on that. That's my best I remember. So it's got to be on, if it's going to be voted on, it has to be presented at the workshop before it can be voted on at the voting meeting. So it's gotta be on, if it's gonna be voted on, it has to be presented at the workshop before it can be voted on at the voting meeting.
I can't say with certainty, but I don't recall reading that specific language in our procedures. But I think it's a great idea, and we probably should include it in the, in the actual language, if, if in fact this body wants that to happen. Also, if the body doesn't want to deal with the same thing multiple times, there are other entities that have put, uh, regulations in their procedures or items in their procedures that you have to take a certain amount of time between bringing motions and that sort of thing. So, uh, all good things to consider, and we won't have too much discussion about that at the July meeting. Good, thank you.
If you know what resolution that was or about the timeframe, that would help. And it may be that we bring it and correct policy and procedure. Uh, I did get, uh, legal advice from, uh, Dr. Johnson, having attorney look at it, and, uh, discuss along with what Mr. Fagan was saying and what the parliamentary was saying. Making a motion again after it's been defeated is called a renewal of the motion. And that's Chapter Ten of Robert's Rules of Order on page three-twenty from this book. While this motion can't take place during the same meeting, it would impose an issue to take up this motion again at a subsequent meeting. It is important to note that this is the case because the motion was defeated during the original meeting. A different set of motions would apply if this motion had been adopted. So that's, that's how Robert's Rules of Order. Hopefully, we can find that resolution and move forward on that. Any other discussion? Mr. Thomas.
I have a question. Then it, then this vote would be a renewal motion today? And it can come out at the same amount that was defeated, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none. Okay. Next item is, uh, a road recommended by Mr. Tipton be added into the county. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of, uh, this road become the county road? Vote yes, opposed, vote no. Motion passes. Next item, you should have received in your second packet that came out, a letter, a recommendation from Jefferson County Highway Commission, uh, voting to recommend Brendan Morgan as a replacement for Condon Batson in the First Highway District at the Highway Commission meeting that was held on April the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. As you know, it's a elected position, she would serve in that position until the next general election, which would be August of twenty-twenty-two. We have a motion and a second. Anyone request to speak? Seeing none. All in favor of this, say. Vote yes, opposed, vote no. Motion passes. That brings us down to Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, the obligation refunding bond. Amount not to exceed over twelve million, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand. This is a refunding, uh, bond. So it's combined to bond, so a motion... Have a motion, Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Fagan. Request to speak. Seeing none. Mr. Fagan.
I have a couple of questions for the financial director.
Mr. Fox.
Just to be certain, would you restate for us the term of the bonds that we're gonna get as far as the rate? And period of time we'll be paying them off, and how much we're gonna save?
Well, we won't know the rate till we execute this.
What we anticipate is gonna be.
You know those off the top of your head, or I can look them up?
No.
We are going to be looking at refinancing, um, on the two thousand and fifteen bonds that benefit, or that are paid by the county. Uh, the projection was one point six-seven percent, um, on the new bonds versus the two, right at three percent we were paid on those bonds. And that is probably a conservative estimate, I hope it should be a little better than that.
And that resulted in how much saving?
About seven hundred and eighty-five, eighty-six thousand, we're projecting as of now on these conservative numbers. And we would not be extending the debt. Matter of fact, we will actually be paying it slightly faster than we previously had been. And then on the other two bond issues that are made up for this resolution, those actually benefit the nursing home. And so they're not really paid by the county, they're paid from revenues of the nursing home, although the county does back the, uh, the nursing home debt with its full faith and credit. Uh, that would be the two thousand and fourteen bonds and sixteen bonds. And so we are looking at, uh, about the same rate, about one point seven percent on those. And we're looking at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of savings. There is no extension of debt on those. Obviously, those savings will benefit the nursing home. And the reason those savings are less is that, uh, we are refunding debt that only has a rate of about two and a half percent. So not quite as high, so it's hard to get a real more savings when you're starting at two and a half.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Request to speak. Seeing none. All in favor, vote yes, opposed, vote no. Motion passed by the majority. Next item is the Debt Management Policy Perspective of the Finance Director. Asked to be approved in this body. You, um, you wanna talk about the economic update?
We need a vote on that, it's just to be approved each year. No changes, same thing for, I don't know how many years. Long time. We have to approve it every year.
Mr. Mayor. I didn't get my request to speak, but put it in now. Okay. Just a quick question. Uh, we have to approve this once a year by a certain date, is that correct?
Yes. I don't know what that thing is, that has to be each year, and it's also part of...
Three-star.
Three-star, you have to have it to be a three-star training.
And three-star equal, see you next month?
Yeah.
And, uh, if we pass this now, we can revisit it, say at our next meeting, if we want to make changes to it at that time.
Sure, we can. This, this, just so you know, this is exactly as proposed by C Task. Word for word.
Thank you.
Other request to speak? If not, in favor of the Debt Management Policy, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Ms. Thomas. Debt Management Policy is approved. Any information on the economic update, Mr. Fox?
I'll answer his question.
Seeing none. That brings us down to Resolution, uh, twenty-one-ten. And if it's possible, these surplus resolutions, if we could combine those into one, with one vote? Uh, all these were surplus items, vote yes.
How much of motion we do that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. So the motion is to combine Resolution twenty-one-ten, eleven, twelve, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And these are all surplus items. Have a motion by Mr. Byrd, second by Mr. Kesterson. Discussion. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Motion carries. That brings us down to information that you, uh, you received in your packet, uh, was a, uh, potential county and/or school funding plan from Cumberland Security. So that, that went out by email. If you have any questions about that, Mr. Gibson is here. Do you, uh, do you wanna address that?
I have to.
Thank you, everyone. I did, um, oops. There was, obviously, uh, this commission has been talking about the school, Jefferson Elementary School for a while now. Uh, y'all had a study done by C Task, we did a study back into last year that y'all had discussed. That study we put together, basically said you could do basically about sixty million dollars. Uh, there was some back and forth on that. So I thought it would be prudent to put together a new plan that really reflects kind of where, where we are today and where y'all may be headed in the near future, not necessarily this big master plan of, you know, how much can we do? But realistically, what we're talking about today. And so the master plan we put together, um, is fairly short, and it outlines basically, um, issuing debt up to thirty million dollars. I.e., that would fund the Jefferson Elementary School, and that also would leave some more stuff that y'all wanted to fund. Not to say that you want to, but I wanted to show realistically, you may have a county building to do, you may have some more school renovations to do in the next few years. Uh, you know, realistically, where we're approximately twenty-nine and a half million dollars each year, uh, over the next three years. And then also, uh, one of the desires, I think, of this county commission in the past, uh, that has been discussed on and off in my time up here, was the sixteen million dollars worth of bonds we did back at the beginning of the school building program, uh, when the high school, uh, renovation and the, uh, new freshman county, all that got started. Those bonds were issued with delayed principal payments and don't mature in, until two thousand and thirty-seven through forty. And so one of the previous, or one of the discussion points has been, uh, can we start prepaying on those? Can we pay those faster and all that? And so I built into the plan the ability, uh, starting in two thousand and twenty-three, when those bonds are callable, i.e. they can be prepaid or refunded or whatever, uh, to start making substantial principal payments on those and leveling those out and paying them off substantially earlier, uh, on average versus where we were. And so that would basically, I think, check all the boxes, and so that's what this plan outlines. And so on page one of this plan is your current debt. It's a graph here, uh, in your packets that just outlines where you are. And, um, it has a revenue number of approximately seven point two million, that's a pretty conservative number, and it shows where the debt is. All this, in this, uh, presentation excludes the nursing homes. Since the nursing home pays for its own debt and stuff, I assume that the nursing home will continue to pay for its own debt, whether it's, uh, the old debt or any new debt that we do. And so this would just be what the county pays out of, uh, various tax revenues and items that come into the fund. Page two outlines a nine and a half million dollar amortization schedule over thirty years, assuming the two-point-seven-five percent interest rate, which actually would be on the high side if we issued bonds here, uh, sooner rather than later. There's a graph on page three of that report, if you look in your packets, uh, kind of what that looks like. Uh, there's another ten million that I assume we would do in two thousand and twenty-two at some point. Used a three and a half percent budget rate, that is substantially higher than the rates are today. It probably will be even at that time, based on what the Fed has said. Uh, there's a graph on page five of that. Uh, there's another ten million in twenty-three. I keep doing ten million, so we'll be doing bank qualified. Uh, that gives us the lowest interest rate out there, I assume the three and a half percent on that. And then there's a graph on page seven, and then page eight shows amortizing the sixteen million dollars that was done at the beginning of the school building program. When the high school was done, uh, making substantial payments that you were not currently paying, about eight hundred thousand bucks a year through two thousand and forty, which is when the final maturity is. All that being said, this is a kind of a graph of what it looks like here on the back of your packets. And so I just wanted to give you an idea of doing what thirty million, twenty-nine and a half million looks like, and accelerating principal payments on the debt. And so this gray line represents your revenue, very conservative number, seven point two million. Uh, this is twenty-one, so twenty-two, twenty-three, we're still below the line. And then even when all this new debt comes on, uh, starting out here in twenty-four, your max debt service, you're still looking at about six million bucks. So there's about a million to a million-two, uh, more revenue versus the expenditure. So my conclusion, or my, you know, if someone asks me, can we issue this debt without a tax increase to the public? Well, not only can we issue the debt without a tax increase, we still have about a million dollars or a million-two out there that, uh, we have available to do other projects. Now, that's assuming that the revenue stays at seven point two million. There's been some discussion painted that that revenue could come down, maybe future county commissions can change it. But I will tell you that that number is still fairly conservative. Your current revenue going into that fund, I mean, it's actually closer to eight million now versus seven point two. So I built enough safety in there to allow for some changes in how this county commission potentially works, or money being changed around, or interest earnings on your money that you have. And the thing going down to zero because interest rates have been cut by the Fed. Obviously, if you're not earning, earning zero in your interest earnings, you can still finance debt pretty cheaply, because rates are going to be pretty low. So it's a, it's a double-edged sword. But that being said, um, you have the capacity, not only to do what I put together, twenty-nine and a half million, uh, you have the capacity to do even more in the future, uh, in case other needs come up. And then even when you get to two thousand and twenty-seven range, we're looking at about two-point-two billion dollars worth of capacity there. So twenty-seven is only five, six years away, and so realistically, that is not that far. I mean, by the time you get the first few projects done, it will be, we will be in that timeframe. So you have lots of capacity. You are a very strong county. Actually, if you go back and look, twenty years ago, uh, your county assessed values off, it's three times bigger today than it was twenty years ago. You've been growing, you've been fulfilling the needs, you have built the biggest capital project that the school, the county will ever do in when you renovated the high school and built the freshman county. That whole building thing is gonna be more expensive than anything else you will do. Um, and so you've checked the list, checked the box on taking care of the high school. You have a fairly new justice center or jail out there that you use, and it's in decent shape versus some other counties that surround you. You checked that box. You do have some school needs out here, but you have the capacity to do it. You're on a very, very good path where you are. It's taken many county commissions over many years to stay on this path and get you where you are today. And now, you know, it reflects in your ratings, it reflects in your financials. You're on a great path, the question is, uh, you know, how do you want to proceed? And the last thing I wanted to mention, um, I've been asked, you know, people talk about spending twenty million dollars for elementary school. Just want to point out that, um, you know, when you go out and spend money for someone's salary that works for the county, or you put gas in sheriff's cruisers and they use it this week, once it's spent, it's kind of gone, you never get it back. But a, a building, uh, like an elementary school or a high school, whatever, you're converting twenty million dollars into a physical asset that's gonna have a long life for sixty, seventy, seventy-five years, that you're gonna be able to use that school again. And so I, I wouldn't necessarily call it, quote, spending, you're just converting one asset, cash, maybe with the help of a little bit of debt that you're gonna pay back, into another long-lived asset versus just spending it on something that you don't have to show for after this week.
Mr. Patterson has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Jim Daley. You want to speak? Oh, okay.
Last week, I asked about the life of the bond, I believe you said the thirty-year bond in Commissioner Cruz's project.
That is what I have put together, we can, we can look at a shorter amortization, but, uh, the rates are so low right now, I thought... but the rates are so low right now, 30 years makes probably the most sense. And for a school that's going to last 75 years, it probably makes no sense.
And I should just say that we can do this project without a tax increase.
That is correct.
Does that mean we won't have to raise property taxes for the next 30 years while we're paying this?
If you only do the projects we have outlined, the answer is yes. If you want, if we come, if you come back, if you're just talking about these specific projects, then your answer is yes. You do not need to raise property taxes to fund this. Not at any time in the future.
Okay. I'll speak more to that later.
If you come back and do $100 million more 10 years from now, I can't say that you can't get there on that project. But under this plan, as you can see, you have the capacity to do this and still have plenty.
In regard to the debt service line item of the budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
But the debt service is only one line item of the budget?
That is correct. There are other things out there. The debt service budget makes up about?
Twenty cents of the tax rate right now.
It does. And or if you really look at it, it makes up about 7% of the total county's budget.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir.
Historically, they're all low rates right now, is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
If you go, what is your odds prediction? If we go out a year, two years, five years? I know you all got some actuary numbers. What, what is your prediction about where the rates are going?
You know, if you go back historically, we, it's always low. I'm not sure that we can go much lower than where we are today. Rates are slightly higher than they were in 2020, but we're talking less than 4% overall because the economy has started to pick up a little bit. So rates have trended up since January. They're still, they've been stable here for the last few weeks. You know, we're talking about refinancing earlier. I mentioned we were at 167 or something for their debt. This will be 30, so we're probably closer to, you know, 2.25 range. I don't, if you wait, if you wait two or three years, I think you're going to see one, interest rates are probably going to be higher. I mean, the odds are on my side to make that statement because they're so low now. And they either, they're probably not going to go any lower. So they either stay where they are or they go up. And my prediction would be that they would go up. I can't say how either goes, they're probably going to be higher.
Have you got any thoughts on how much? Given that you're, they're going to pass a spending program of around an ex- trillion dollar for infrastructure, will that put pressure on rates?
I think it's already started to put pressure on rates a little bit. I think if they continue to spend money left and right in Washington DC, that we would have no choice but to see interest rates go a little bit higher. And the Fed, the Fed Chairman just spoke on 60 Minutes on Sunday. He said that they are committed to raising the inflation rate to a sustainable 2% per year. And we haven't hit 2% in the last decade, I don't think, in any one year hardly. So while 2% is not a high inflation rate, it's higher than it has been historically. And that would mean, I mean, even some investor bought some bonds for 30 years and wanted a, you know, 1.5% real rate of return. If you have 2% inflation, I mean, your rate would have to be 3.5%. And what I'm going to issue debt is sub 2.5 probably for 30 years now.
So you're saying probably at least 1% or more?
Or more. How would that?
And that's over a year, two years?
I think the next year, rates, I mean, the Fed's committed to keep rates low and try to continue to, you know, see the economy pick up. It's going to be, you know, how many people will get the vaccination? How many people, how fast the economy opens back up? But as most people may be aware in this room, you know, there's already starting to be inflationary pressure, whether it's lumber for housing or debts. So you go to home vehicles, you know, they're in short supplies of building materials. You know, you can't, you see the news all the time. Here recently that carmakers are shut down because they don't have computer chips to put in cars. They can't make enough cars. All those issues are supply-side issues. And yet we keep struggling to demand side of the economy. And as long as we keep doing that, I think this is going to put pressure on prices. And you're going to see increases, will hopefully be more inflation, which will be higher rates ultimately.
So you're saying at least 1% or more?
I think so.
Mr. Lang, you said the other day 1% was how much on 25 and 30 years?
2.7 on 25 and 3.2 on 30. I think so.
Ms. Haffey.
That was my question. What does 1% increase in the interest rate cost us?
That was on 20 million, not 32, right?
I did it on 20, like.
It's obvious these were these both.
Mr. Blain.
Okay. I've been asked about this sunset provision on the 2015 tax, the will tax that we enacted. Where does this fit into your chart on the green line?
Well, obviously, the county commission, whether it's this one or future, could decide whether to keep that will tax in place, let it sunset, change it up or down if they want to. It's my understanding that that's a $25 change in the will tax or $2 a month for that each owner of a car or I guess about a gallon of gas a month or something or putting in real life terms, what the cost would be. That's about a million dollar decrease or something like that in that fund. However, the 7.2 number, as I mentioned, is very conservative. Your revenue in that fund is actually closer to $8 million today. So I had assumed that all your interest earnings go to zero, that all the transfers you make in the fund go to zero. I built in enough conservatism in these numbers, like on both sides. One, on the, if you implement the plan sooner on the interest rates, because I think we get rates locked in lower than what I projected, so your costs will be lower. And I think on the revenue side, your revenue is already higher than 7.2. So I think there's enough flexibility there to still get all this done and have capacity left to do more projects in the future.
So for that green line revenue, to be accurate, it would have to show us in the pre-keeping the will tax for 2024?
No, I think actually, since the revenue right now is almost $8 million bucks, if you did cut the?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm in a, okay.
Yeah, so the revenue now is actually closer to $8 million. So if you cut the will tax, you're still right around the 7.2.
Okay.
So like I said, it's a very conservative chart.
Mr. Bird.
Okay, he touched on what I was going to ask. You know, I keep hearing no property tax increase. So when this goes away, will they have to raise property tax? Or we ever want to fund this and do away with the will tax and not raise property tax?
So is your question, if the, if you issue the debt, you build the school, and you decide to get rid of the, or let the will tax sunset, what is the situation of county? And my response is going to be, you can still do the 30 million and you can pay for it all, and you can do it without a property tax increase.
That's what I wanted to say.
Mr. Davis.
You know, I remember in your, not long, you've been in there six years. I remember six years ago when you stepped up to the podium. Our financial situation went quite so good.
No, it was good what? But several things have happened since then. I think the county's revenue has increased.
Physical responsibility on our part.
On your part. I think you've had some help. The county has continued to grow. So you've had more people move in. You've had sales tax increase. I mean, you've increased that during the last year. That is helping on your, the county commission's part. You've held expenses in check. So your revenue has gone up. You renewed your lease on the hospital. So you have that new revenue source coming in. So that, that is helping. On the debt side, we've had a couple of things happen. In the last six years, we refinanced several pieces of debt and saved quite a bit of money. So that keeps bringing those costs down versus where we started. And in a couple of years, on this chart, as you can see, when this debt right here, you've got two years left and a big chunk of debt goes away. So your debt payments are going to start falling substantially. So that's, if we were having this conversation six years ago, this whole conversation would be different. But now that we are where we are today, with the debt falling off, because you have been making substantial payments on your debt, you're paying some old debt off, and that debt has fallen off, you have capacity because those dollars currently going to debt service are no longer needed after a few days that you can apply to new debt service. So that's kind of where we are.
So I do, I did understand you correctly back earlier when you were speaking. This is basically the first step towards $60 million of our new debt?
I don't think so. Because I don't, I think in the last few months, things have changed. I don't, obviously, this county commission, if you want to find $60 million of projects, you probably can find.
You said that we could, you know what?
This county commission asked me back in the last year to do a study. And I think myself and C Task and Lang had put together kind of a bunch of charts. And we all came to the same conclusion that the county could borrow, you know, somewhere between $55 or $60 million. You know, revenue staying where they are and potential growth and the debt falling off and all that, that would be kind of like, you know, everything follows in line. Since that time, which is why I put this new plan together, I don't think the county commission is really realistically talking about borrowing $60 million. Two, the Jefferson Elementary School project is, you know, $20 million, but the school system has stepped up and said that they're going to commit $15 million to the renovation payment based on what I read in the paper. And so that is $15 million if the county commission does not have to borrow for the, you know, the second worst school in the county. So your borrowing needs probably aren't as strong today as they were six months ago because of the money from the federal government coming in. And on top of that, the thought process at the time was that, you know, the county may need a building for the county clerk's office or whatever. And I think there's some discussion now about maybe using some of the federal dollars if allowed to do that. So that takes pressure off the county potentially having borrowed for that project. So I just come, I come back to, when it's all said and done, between the schools and the county, y'all might use $20 million of federal dollars to build a project that you wouldn't have to borrow money for. And so I don't think, based on where our discussion has been in the last six months, that all these $60 million of the projects are going to have to be paid for with the borrowed dollars. So I don't think you're going to?
Excuse me for interrupting, but, but none of this can be, we can't use any of the federal dollars on this project, is I understand it?
I don't, no, I haven't.
Okay, that's how I should.
That may make sense.
You know, and you make a good point that money's cheap right now. It is. But as my daddy always said, when money's cheap, bill of the year is high. And, you know, as we've seen, Mr. Martin, the nursing home, you know, they're looking at a $2 billion shortage on a, what, $9, $10 million project? So if you put that together, $2 million shortage on a $9, $10 million project, you know, this one at $20 million could easily go to $25 million. If you apply the same metric to it.
But that's, you know, I put, that's one reason I put this plan together at $29.5 million. I don't expect the school to go to $29.5 million, but there is enough flexibility in this plan to, to get done that school and probably some more stuff too, and still have plenty of capacity. That was all in form of this plan.
All right. I'll give you a little bit of children.
No other requests to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Yes, sir.
That brings us to Resolution 2121, authorizing the, sorry, go ahead.
Did we miss direct deposits? But it's on?
That was a request from the financial director.
Yes, I need those. I need those. I need those direct deposits.
Okay, well, before we move away from the financial director, a lot of the gentleman spoke on insurance. Would you mind addressing? I'm a little confused on insurance, direct deposits, and what's going on there?
Well, a long story, but Mayor and I are taking on a project to look at all of our insurance, whether it's health, property casualty, volunteer programs, all those things. So one of the things that we're doing right now is we're bidding out the health insurance. That's not what he talked about. We're bidding that out. We should know something here pretty soon. We may go away from state planning. When we looked at voluntary, voluntary plans, and that's what he's talking about, we have an agent of record that handles voluntary programs. It's called USA. They have over 50 insurance companies that they, they grade and they offer to our employees. Problem we have with insurance companies that come in outside of that is they want a separate meeting with our employees. So we already have one, one time a year that we sit down with our employees, and it's called open enrollment, where they look at all possible plans. Cancer insurance, life insurance, disability, all those kinds of things. So we, we, so we're looking at those two. There's only two companies, actually. There's three, but only has one person left on. And that's Life Alabama and?
Pathlight.
Pathlight, that's right. Those are the only two. We have given those companies instructions. We're not, all we're going, all we're saying is we're not going to do your books for you. They can steal. And we give the employees the opportunity. They can go do this directly with those companies. So we're just not going to be handling that poorly. They can, and we, we finished this open enrollment last week. And we had a review with them today. Not one employee had a problem with changing over to have the money drawn out of their account as opposed to us taking care of the administrative issues for those two companies. And in fact, when we notified the central office for both of those companies, they understood exactly what we're doing and had no problem.
You, you say you're bidding the insurance. That's our healthcare insurance for our county, bullies, or school system, or both?
Both. That's separate from this discussion. But we're, we're working on that right now. We haven't bid it out. We've been with the state plan for 30 years. We haven't bid it out in at least the time that I've been here.
But you are a little bid it out for county and school side, both?
That's correct.
Thank you.
No comments? Moving on to Resolution 2121, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of Jefferson County, Tennessee, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $2 million in more or more serious making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bond, establishing the terms thereof and disposition proceeds thereof and providing for the lag of taxes for the payment principal of premium and interest on the bonds. That motion by Mr. Lowe, second by Mr. Bird. Seeing no requests to speak, all in favor of Resolution 2121? Tom Neil, sorry.
Question, Mr. Rogers, if you can, please.
Yes, sir.
There, there's been a lot of discussion about that county, nobody pays for the bonds except the nursing home. So walk me through the business model that you have. If you had, and then give me an estimate on your all's market penetration in the county, do 90% of the people in the county, 80%, they have a family member that sometimes come through there? Kind of give me about your business model. If you had, if you've got higher costs, you charge more or you charge less? Or walk me through that.
Well, I'll do my best. We, of course, accept private pay for, for the board. We also accept Medicare, Medicaid, and other forms of insurance. And so when we form a budget or we look at a budget, we look at it based upon occupancy rates. And so that's, that's how we set budgets and that's how we plan to operate in the future is based on what our occupancy rate, what our revenue has historically been. And for the past many years, you know, things have been well. I mean, occasionally, some years, we've had a downtick. But overall, the trend, and I think my annual audit is part of the audit committee, so that's where we've been. I think things have trended in a positive direction financially. Of course, I don't know the future, but, but I have every hope and confidence that it will continue in that track. If you look at demographics, we are an aging society. And I wasn't prepared with statistics to be able to give you, but, but I feel based on what I have seen, what I have read, there will be a continuation of needs, procedures in our community. As has been mentioned, our community, our county continues to grow. And a lot of the people that come here are retirees. They see what a good deal Jefferson County is, and they want to move here. And I think that's a compliment to our county government and the efficiency in which you operate. As far as how many local people come through our doors? Um, as far as how many local people come through our doors, that's difficult for me to say, but we do have a good and many Jefferson County residents, we serve very many Jefferson County residents at Jefferson Park. We look forward to that being the case at Life Time as well. I think we'll serve a good and many Life Time residents, but I hope that we will also draw potentially from other counties, Hamlin County, for example. So, um, I have every confidence that the Jefferson Park at Life Time facility will be successful. And, um, historically, if you look at the record of Jefferson County nursing home through the years, um, to my knowledge, uh, we have never missed a bond payment. We planned for it, we budgeted for it. We know how much our bond payments are going to be on an annual basis, and so we sweep money in an account each month so that we will have that money available when the bond payment is due. So it is a bond payment doesn't happen by chance, we plan for that.
So it's, it's part of your overhead. You build it into your rates like a hotel would, if it costs this much to build an Elton versus a Hotel Six. I mean, your facilities, based on your overhead, is where your rates that you charge.
Yes.
And, and I want to say right in front of you, Roger, I think you do a tremendous job out there.
Well, I mean, you, but it's, it's.
I think we've got one of the best nursing homes in there is.
You're very confident.
And I guess what I'm trying to arrive at is that, uh, the citizens that come in and use the facility, the, the families of the people in Jefferson County or whoever they are, their rate is determined by your overhead and how much debt you carry. If you had zero debt, you could operate less, I mean, the rate would be less.
Yes, to some degree. We have to set our private rates based upon our Medicaid rates. Medicaid is the state insurance program that helps pay for, uh, indigent care. And so we get a reimbursement from the Medicaid program based on allowable costs, and we have to submit cost reports to the state. So they tell us what our Medicaid rate is, then we set a private rate, and that private rate is always above where the Medicaid rate is. And so we typically try not to go too far over that rate just because we don't want to price ourselves out of competition.
But that, that rate that you said, it's in the private rate you said, it has to do with your operating costs and what they assume that are operating, normal operating costs and all that is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Byer?
Chief of Charge.
Okay. Request to speak? Seeing none, all in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Yes, sir. Motion passed. Thank you all. Resolution Twenty-One Twenty-Two, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed two million general obligation bonds of Jefferson County, Tennessee. Motion by Mr. Byrd, seconded by Mr. Solomon, request to speak? Seeing none, all in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Budget amendments. Mr. Scarlett?
Yes, sir. Uh, First Budget Amendment, General Fund One-O-One, Amendment Thirteen, One Through Twenty-Two. Uh, most of the stuff is self-explanatory. We do have on Number Eleven, please note that Mr. Frank will be moving his payroll under the finance office, and they'll be handling it. That is for that fee. Uh, he uses twelve thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and ninety-eight cents, Mr. Chairman, therefore you need a roll call motion.
Needs no second, coming from committee?
So moved.
All in favor, both yes, opposed, no, unless there's a discussion, I'd say. Motion carries. Mr. Chairman? Magic fee?
Second, One, One-Sixteen?
Uh, it's One-O-One, Amendment Fourteen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's the ten thousand for Geotech.
Well, you're not going to miss that, are you? So moved, Mr. Chairman. That is for, uh, Geotech work on a possible building of a county building for the election commission.
Analyst.
Analyst. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? In favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Pass, my majority, seventeen to two. Next item?
One-Sixteen. Sanitation fund, amendment number four, moving funds to cover part-time personnel through year-end, five thousand dollars. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Any requests to speak? In favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion passed. Next amendment?
Highway Fund One-Thirty-One, amendment six, uses fund balance of highway. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Any requests to speak? Seeing none, in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Next amendment?
Captain Fund One-Seventy-One, amendment four, four thousand dollars, moving funds to reserve, expenditure line, cover cost, ceiling, bracing, and plumbing in the courthouse. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Next amendment?
Other capital projects, One-Eighty-Nine, amendment four. This is a Tennessee State Community Development Block grant, uh, pass-through, spending chair going to New Market Utilities. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Next amendment?
Landfill Fund Two-O-Seven, amendment three, insurance recovery on the truck, it was wrecked. Uh, also believe some money to cover tire disposal and increase part-time, overtime usage. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. School amendments?
Budget Amendment One-Forty-One, Budget Amendment Number Twelve, One Through Six, no use of fund balance. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Budget Committee?
General Purpose One-Forty-One, Amendment Number Thirteen, One Through Nine. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Next amendment?
General Purpose One-Forty-One, Budget Amendment Fourteen, One Through Eight. So moved, Mr. Chairman, no use of fund balance.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Next amendment?
One-Forty-One, Budget Amendment Fifteen, no use of fund balance. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Last one.
Food Service, One-Forty-Three, Budget Amendment Number Four, recovery food loss offered at elementary. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No requests to speak? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Get the chair bros for it.
Oh, sorry.
Next items, Resolution Twenty-One Twenty-One Thirteen, it's a resolution to meeting the zoning map of Jefferson County by rezoning property from A-one to R-R. Hold it up. Yep, nominate committee, Mr. Ketch.
I'm going to refer this to Randy Bales since he was the gentleman that conducted the meeting.
Mr. Bales?
We got three of them there. Got me sticking on ACLB unless somebody would graciously want to volunteer and knock me out of that position. And we have, uh, Hubert Davis and LeAnn Sutton going to the industrial development board.
Coming from nominate committee, makes no motion, any discussion or other nominations? All in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. Motion carries. Now we're on Resolution Twenty-One Thirteen. It's a resolution, uh, amending the zoning map of Jefferson County, Tennessee by rezoning property from A-one, agriculture forestry to R-R Rural Resort. Uh, this is the zoning map of Jefferson County, Tennessee, hereby amended by rezoning parcel zero-zero-four-point-oh-oh, a Jefferson County tax map, as depicted on a map from A-one agriculture to R-R Rural Resort. Property rezonance located on Chestland Hill Road in Daners, Tennessee, owned by Heath Ellis.
All these, uh, were approved by the planning commission, all four?
No motion needed.
Um, yeah, you'll need a motion sometime.
Yeah, you've got to.
Okay. Floor is up before motion. Motion by Mr. Lowe, sort of second. Second by Mr. Byrd. Any requests to speak, Mr. Subfay?
Okay. I spoke to Mr. Ellis today, and I was going to talk to some of the things he said, so, and I don't know a lot of his health, but this is what I want to talk. Okay, so they were looking at forty to sixty condos. Um, there might be two phases, two footprints to the project, and the, um, footprints would be at the higher points on the property. The entrance would not be curved, and they'd be getting one point seven miles of water saved from damage. He had said five units per floor, um, possibility of six to eight stories depending on how they decided to build it. They'll have a, a firm will be hired who is studying architecture. My concern was, I said, I thought according to the town of Dandridge, um, buildings could only be so tired, so tall for them to service it through the fire department. This is not a city of Dandridge, the city limits is my understanding, and it's outside the urban growth plan. But because there are so many units and, uh, concern for health and safety of the development, I would like to make that we postpone this for the developer, um, to consult with the Dandridge Fire Department to make sure the fire department will support what they're trying to do, because I don't feel comfortable, um, supporting this at this time. Though, Mr. Ellis was, um, congenial, and he did not know that they had a limit that they serviced, and I think he probably would be willing to make the building not as tall, but I don't feel comfortable, um, voting on this at this time.
We have a motion to postpone. Second by Mr. Coleman. See if you can make a motion to a meeting, Katie.
Okay, and then once this is, I, I want to just say something else before it's voted on.
Say, I'm sorry.
Okay, there's a second part to this. Um, I don't think in our building and zoning plan, that we have a maximum pot for buildings in the county, on the county side, so I would like to send it to the county planning commission too, to have them look at setting rural resort maximum building pots to add to our building and zoning plan. So I don't know if I need to put it on next month and have a motion to do it, or if it can just be sent to the committee without a motion.
So you, right now we have a motion to postpone.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
So let me remind commissioners again, this is just a rezoning, a planning commission, which is John Dale and Paul's own, has to finally say so, yes. Um, and if, you want them to put it to July? Is that what she's, our motion is? I mean, current next meeting, July, at this time. So you're holding him up three more months?
Well, but if he can.
Yes, that's exactly what we're asking.
But you've got to let the planning commission makes the other. This is just a rezoning. Because I can't.
There's one reason.
Mr. Subfay?
Okay, Mr. Ellis had purchased this property yet and is contingent, contingent upon the rezoning. So if the town of Dandridge can't support what he's willing to build, why would I go ahead and approve it? I, I just think it would protect him in making sure he can actually build what he's trying to. I don't know what the right answer is, but, uh, that's what the intent was. It wasn't to stop this project altogether. I just want to make sure the town knows what they're getting, even though it's not in the city limits, and he can get the fire protection and the needs for his resort. And my other point was, I think this is the first of many developments like this that's going to come to our county, and we've never had this top, or this large of a structure coming to the county, and I think we need to look at our zoning plan to see if that's what the county really wants. So there's two parts to my, um, request.
Mr. Ketch?
Um, and I, I think Katie's made a, a good point. If you go ahead and rezone it, you have no control basically over what they do, as long as they comply with what is in that zone. So as right, up right now, you're much safer to hold off and do, you know what's going to happen and know that, you know, that's what you want. She also, uh, alluded to, the gentleman told her that he would have water and sewer from the town of Dandridge. Now, Dandridge has a moratorium on sewer that it does not extend outside city limits, so, uh, if he gave her that information, he's wrong.
And I think according to rural resort, doesn't he have to have sewer for this type of development?
He's going to build his own sewer.
That's not what he told me today.
Yeah, we heard a lot of different stories.
What he told the planning commission. Uh, and he's running water from Dandridge, and that'd be up to him. If he can't get the water, then it's, it's over.
Right now, we're, we have a motion to amend, postpone to our next meeting. Any other discussion on the motion to postpone?
You've got a meeting in June.
We have, we can add it to you. There's a June meeting.
Just for information.
All in favor of the motion to postpone to our next meeting, both yes, opposed to that, both no. Ms. Langwood?
Oh, I thought I hit it.
Motion to postpone is passed. This will be postponed to our next meeting. That brings us to Resolution Twenty-One Dash Fourteen. It's a resolution to meeting the zoning map of Jefferson County, Tennessee by rezoning property from A-one agriculture forestry to R-one rural residential. This property re, re- This property rezoned is 2570 East in Dandridge, is owned by Keith and Angela Williams. Motion to approve will be in order. Motion by Mr. Solomon. Second, Mr. Byrd. Discussion or request to speak. If you're seeing none, all in favor of this rezoning, vote yes, opposed, vote no. Passed 14 to four. Next, Resolution 21-15. It's a meeting of zoning map of Jefferson County by rezoning property from A1 Agriculture Forestry to C2 General Commercial. Property be rezoned is located on 367 Highway 2532 in Whitehite and is owned by Jerry and Joyce Shaver. Motion by Mr. Lyle. Second by Mr. Coleman. Zero requests to speak. If you're in favor of this rezoning, vote yes, if you're opposed, vote no. Motion passed. Next item, Resolution 21-16. It's a resolution to meeting the zoning map of Jefferson County Tennessee by rezoning property from A1, Agriculture Forestry to R1 Rural Residential. Uh, this property be rezoned is located on Harrison Ferry Road in Whitehite, is owned by Chad and Reagan Long. Motion by Mr. Byrd, second by Mr. Solomon, Mr. Fager.
Is Mr. Long represented at the hearing?
Meeting one, with this property here, the present.
Mr. Seale, do you know what he's planning to do with this once the timeframe is on?
He's just trying to get two or three extra lots. Um, let me remind you again, R1, uh, I had some calls about single white trailers, they're not allowed in R1. As it is now, he could, uh, probably put ten, eleven single whites there. But that's not what Chad's got in mind, or what he told the planning commission anyway. But if you rezone it to R1, they can't be no single whites.
Thank you, that was my next question, I had some similar calls, thank you.
Request to speak. Zero. All in favor of this resolution, vote yes, opposed, vote no. Motion passed. Resolution 21-20. Ted. Library, yeah, I'm calling the board. We have some nominations from the, uh, from the library board. These come directly to county commission. Uh, their list is there, Jessica Churchwell, Carolyn Allen, and Jeanne Kellum. Motion by Solomon, second by Reed. All in favor of these, vote yes, opposed, vote no. Motion passed. Next item is Resolution 21-20. Resolution to the board commissioners of Jefferson County, Tennessee adopting the International Residential 1 and 2 and 3 dwelling code 2018 edition and certain appendices and with certain lawful changes. And repealing resolutions adopting other versions, including amendments of this code. Motion by Mr. Ketchum, second by Mr. Reed. All requests to speak. If you're in favor, vote yes, if you're opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Brings us to, uh, new business. Ms. Thomas has requested to make a motion for this meeting.
If they, if we don't build a school, they will build the school the, we, they will build the school the way they want to build it, and we would have to pay for it. So I think it's time that we need to vote yes for this school and do the right planning votes. Because if the state comes in and tells us that they will either build it, or you're going to build it, you don't want the state to tag that. Am I correct on that, or am I wrong? That's what they told us when we was done to jail. They told us, you either build a jail, or we will build it for you. So, it's y'all's decision now.
Miss Southlake.
Okay, I have a few questions for Dr. Johnson or Representative Dr. Johnson. Since, um, the vote is for new versus renovation, it appears according to our agenda. Can you tell me why there's such a huge difference between the Lewis Group renovation number initially and the next, uh, numbers?
Sure, I'd be happy for them to take me there. I'm going to let them do that, because that's not my wheelhouse, that's their expertise in architecture and instructions.
I will, I'll speak to the Lewis Group's initial number. Uh, when we were first tasked with doing the assessment, there was never any conversation at that point of a renovation remodel of Jefferson Elementary to the level that is under current discussion. And so the 3.6 number was essentially a Band-Aid to fix immediate problems, uh, to try to button up the building envelope, so that we didn't have some of the issues that you've heard about this evening. Uh, but it was not, did not address anything in regards to programmatic needs. Um, it, it was essentially a Band-Aid fix, is what it was.
Any other?
Nice.
I can piggyback on the, the, the 3.6 also, and Doug can back me up on this, did not include certain items like a base of asbestos, uh, accessibility, uh, improvements. It also didn't even include, that was just some construction costs, it didn't include design fees, testing, inspection, some of the other things that had to be done, so. Since if you did that today and escalated it based on some of the things we're seeing in the market, that 3.6, just to do what he was describing, would be more like five million today. And it still doesn't take care of accessibility improvements, uh, new lighting, plumbing, security, new finishes that you would have to do when you do the HVAC, you know, system. Uh, abatement that has those materials, um, replace some of the outdated kitchen equipment. And it also doesn't include the lease of modular units that you'll need. Be able to remove kits around if you have a special renovation, so. When you tack that on, um, all of that, which are closer to 14 million, and that still doesn't include replacing the roof. Um, the structural repairs that still need to be looked at in the building, um, any unsuitable soils that we find. The drainage issues, he, that was, you know, looking at drainage right at the building, there's drainage issues all around that whole site, it doesn't include cost for that. And so when you had, tack that on and meet some of the programmatic needs of expanding the administrative suite, that's another 3.7 million, that's how we get to the 17.
So essentially, the first number was just a Band-Aid, short-term fix. And then this would be, because we're comparing new building, which would be fifty, seventy-five years out, the, this would be a major renovation, I don't know how many years it would last, it wouldn't last as long as a new build. So that's why your number is so different. Okay, second question. Because everybody keeps talking about construction costs are up. But how are school buildings holding, and are there any recent bids in our area that you can compare this site to?
And Doug can speak this too, but the, the twenty million dollars, the budget that we, is based on, you know, our evaluation of the, what's being designed. But also, there's two, three, actually, three new elementary school bid here recently, recently in East Tennessee. We use that as our basis for what it costs to build a school these days, and escalated it out. So we're, there's actually three of them. And the average cost for the ones that we use is about a hundred and seventy-two dollars a square foot. That was our starting point, and then we escalated it out, and that got us to a hundred and ninety dollars a square foot for construction only, so we're using recent bid data as the basis.
So you're pretty confident in your bid numbers, well, based on recent?
Yeah, we're hoping the market doesn't keep doing what it's doing, though.
Knox County bid two elementary schools since the beginning of February. They bid one on February 4th, they bid a second one on February 14th. Uh, both of those schools, uh, have a storm shelter, which is a, a code requirement for that area. It is not a code requirement for Jefferson County. The construction of that shelter tends to drive up the construction cost. The one that bid on February 4th was eighty-seven thousand square feet with a storm shelter. Bid for, the building construction number was a hundred and seventy dollars a square foot. The building in-site number was two hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. Uh, Northwest Sector Elementary School, which is a new school out in the Harden Valley, Carns area of Knox County, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand square feet, again, it also has a storm shelter. It bid at a hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot, the building only. The building in-site was a hundred and ninety-eight dollars a square foot. There is a third elementary school that Knox County is doing, but it's a different project delivery method. It's a design build, so the contractor and architect were selected as a team prior to designing and beginning on that project, so it's not being publicly bid, those numbers aren't readily available.
All right, thank you. And I have another question for Dr. Johnson. And I don't know if you'll notice, because maybe it comes from state. But do you foresee our students remaining virtual next year, like they've done this year? And my, um, reasoning is, I know, even in Jefferson City, it's not a large housing boom. So it's got to be an increase in number, population of students that are going to be filling our school soon. But the other argument people use, well, they're virtual or whatnot. We know next year, do you have an idea whether we'll have these virtual students, or will everybody be in person for the most part?
Uh, I'll say for the most part. So here's, here's the, uh, guidance from Tennessee Department of Education. As long as the governor's emergency order stays, we remain in a state of emergency, then those CLPs, those continuing learning plans that we had to develop last year in order to reopen schools, remain in effect. Once that state of emergency ends, the only way to offer distance learning is if we create our own virtual school. And that's a pretty big task, right now we're worried about getting the six hundred and six kids, as of today, that are still on distance learning, plug back in as many as possible and close them this year out. So, uh, again, that'd be a pleasure, board, uh, it was mentioned in last month's meeting. Uh, but initially, right now, it's to bring as many on back as possible. Of course, we still have some of those advances that were made, uh, the use of online platforms and those things will help us with homebound and other services that we can provide students, but as a whole, unless that state of emergency is extended, by, by what we're being told by the Department of Education, we cannot offer distance learning unless we create our own virtual school.
Thank you. And then I'd like to give a couple comments, hang on. And so, I'd like to say, to point out, we don't have a staffing problem, which would be worse than a building problem. So we have a facility problem that we need to figure out. Um, so I think that's positive on one side, because we have excellent teachers and administrators, and I appreciate everything they're doing every day, and I want to say thank you. The renovations, I personally feel like, logistically, we're going to have, it'll be a logistic nightmare trying to feed the kids, get the hot meals. We saw that at Whitehite when we did a renovation there. And they pointed out, the building really doesn't have any good bones. So what are we starting with to begin with? And I can tell you, personally, I love old buildings, I love to try to preserve, I like to try to restore. Even if we restore this thing, it's going to look the same from the outside, and it's not going to be appealing to anybody that's going in. We've been doing renovations at our house, I thought our house was in pretty good shape. And this week, I figured out, we covered up a whole lot of damage in R1. And we don't know what we'll get into if we try to renovate that building. The building doesn't seem safe, and it's not acceptable with what we've allowed our students to be in. And I feel it's a better value for our taxpayers in the long run to build a new facility rather than trying to renovate. The interest rates are low, our debt structure's good, we've been told it's going to cause a property tax increase, and our student population should increase and grow. And we need to remain competitive with the market. So, it's a neat number one, and I hope we all will vote to support the new building.
Reed, do you have a motion to amend?
I do.
Proceed.
I'm moving forward. County Commission of Jefferson County requests for the Jefferson County School Board, I stress request, that all COVID-19 relief funding that is available for school repair and renovation be used, projects completed and expenses accounted for, prior to making any funding request for the building of new school or the renovation of existing schools. We further request that any available funding be expended first for the schools with the greatest needs and that fit the highest priority needs that are identified by the school system, architects, and the system-wide needs assessment. This motion should also be considered at the record request by the county commission for all documents pertaining to COVID-19 relief funding, any grant funding, or other funds that may be appropriated and available for school funding, renovation, or where, repair, a request for documentation that demonstrates available funding for school building repairs and renovation.
So that's a motion to amend. We have a second by Mr. Bales. Discussion. Terry Don, how was that from the?
Yeah, not, my request was not on the table.
Anyone that likes to speak, we go clean slate. Mr. Bales.
So what are we going to do about the fifteen million worth of improvements that has to be done at the thing? Are we going to come back and do a long against it too? At some point, we've got to step up a little, it's, it's got to be done. We're talking a 10% difference for fifteen million.
Other comments? Um, Bales.
Can I comment back?
I'll let you close, okay?
Go ahead, Lon.
Go ahead, uh, hold on, Mr. Douglas.
What's the figure on the COVID-19 relief money, schools getting? I'm sorry, Dr. Allen.
Oh, you're good. Uh, ESER 1 came in, it's what's called the CARES Act, and it was, uh, last summer, and before, ESER was really a point three. It was 1.5, a lot of that went to the student devices. Uh, there's approximately, again, and Langley can attest this, we're out all the time having to make sure, uh, board, we don't spend that money without the board approval, we have to make sure that we pull it from the right pocket. ESER 2 was 6.274, it was put into four buckets by the board at a previous school board meeting. That was transportation, technology, uh, renovation, and also academics. And, uh, that money is being processed there as well. And then ESER 3 came in just the other day, it's 14091, and I'm sorry, I don't remember past that, Tom. Uh, and again, the learning loss, 20% has to be committed to learning loss, which is, uh, for us about two point, a little north of 2.8 million. Uh, on paper, we have ready to present to the board somewhere around three million or 3.1 over the next two years. Uh, there are dates that all that has to be spent by as well. Uh, ESER 1 has to be spent by June 30, 2022, or it goes back to the state. ESER 2 has to be spent by June 30, 2023, or it goes back to the state. And ESER 3 has to be spent by June 30, 2024, or it goes back to the state, and those are drop dead dates. And that's after a six-month extension, it was September 30th until a couple weeks ago.
So you had all that and subtract what you bid, and you should come up with about twenty million.
Well, they've also committed fifteen million to Piedmont renovation to, I think the intent was to show that they're not coming back to ask this body for money there to address the tops tool, which is consistent with their current motion. Request funding for a new building for Jefferson Elementary and renovate Piedmont.
Spend fifteen million at Piedmont?
They've committed fifteen million, we will know May 6th, is, they're working on developing the scope of work, uh, what that ESER...
I'm gonna tell you one thing that still sticks here. You spent four million dollars over at high school, at the athletic bills. And nobody mentioned any of this to what was all said and known. It would've been nice to know this was coming down the tracks, right behind it. So that's, you know, that's, I guess, the disingenuousness of it is just what really leaves me bad basing my mind.
Sure, I'll be happy to try to explain. One, two point four was allocated out of fund balance.
I understand all that.
But, but part of that, in an open meeting, it wouldn't be recorded because it wasn't a motion. It was said, we knew the needs assessment was coming and we were pretty sure they weren't gonna find all the schools were in good shape. And it was said that that way they could pay cash for that. You also were dealing with possible Title IX violations. And we had letters from concerned parents that were issuing some of the concerns. We had a baseball field that looked like the Chicago Cubs were playing on it and a softball field that looked worse than my football plate on this year. So we tried to build some equity in there. We had a track, and you know, we go into all that. But it was to do that, to set it aside, because the intent was to have, they had the money in hand, as the board talked about, at that point in time to pay for that. So that we didn't also then have the needs assessment plus still needing to address the athletics. That was the intent or what was said in the meeting.
I know there was money that had to be spent. There was also some that was added. That's water under the bridge.
I understand. We also got a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to go along with that to put, you know, company delights on the tennis courts, which are also used by the community and public as part of a pre-disagreement that you all would all know more about than I would.
Ms. Lang?
It is water under the bridge. And, you know, we as a commission love to put the blame on you folks, school board, for not doing maintenance. But then when you do it, and you give us new ball fields and new facilities and places for sports events, they were gonna hold it against you. I mean, we can't have our cake and eat it too. We've either got to afford you money, we are a funding body, and we cannot tell you necessarily what to do with that money. We can't tell you what to do, in my estimation, with the COVID relief monies. That's your decision. And I trust you, school board, I trust you, Dr. Johnston, that you have done more homework, you have spent more hours in researching this than we have in all of our little meetings and all of our communications by email. We have just tonight gotten a glowing report repeating what Mr. Potts has repeatedly said to us, meeting after meeting. We are the strongest we have been financially in a county in a long time. It's tired to, it's time to quit blaming you folks for not doing and then blaming you for doing. It's time for us to act. And they need a new building.
No, I didn't blame it, school board, but I'll blame it.
Okay. See, now, Mr. Reed, you wanna close on your amendment?
You know, I listened to a lot here tonight concerning, have we toured? Yes, I've toured Jefferson Elementary. I've had grandchildren to go there. I'm grateful for the teachers that teach there. There is a total of six elementary schools in this county, correct? Is that correct?
Six dedicated, but two more dead.
We paid a hundred and twenty-four thousand, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Potts, for this needs assessment. And now we are hearing that this was only Band-Aid. I've looked at this, these were recommended, these were additional improvements that covered some of the things I believe that has been said it was not. I took the figures, I upped them by thirty percent. For Jefferson Elementary, that's nine million dollars. For Dandridge Elementary School, they need eight million dollars. For Dandridge Elementary School, six point four million dollars. For New Market Elementary School, six million dollars. For Talbot, five point six. For Mount Orp, which is the newest school, over half a million dollars. I care about every student in this county. I would like to see and request, like the motion says, that we attack Jefferson Elementary first. We can't afford four new elementary schools. We can't do that. There are schools in this county that are hurting right now too, just like Jefferson Elementary is. I think it would be great. I sat in the retreat that the school board had when I first came on county commission, I sat there all day. One of the board members made a comment that, well, let's get a committee with Jefferson County Commission, and we can work together. And I've heard how glowing reports about how commission has worked good with the school board. I served in the county government for eight years, took some time off, and then I ran for office. I haven't ever seen it, it's always been this way. It's like everything has got to be done now, and I know there's issues that's got to be handled now, or they need to close the school down because of some of the things that you're saying. But we've got other schools that need taken care of too, and those students are as important as Jefferson Elementary School students. And I don't understand how we've got into this position. When one of the letters from the teacher, and I've read all your emails, I'd like to have answered all of them. But a teacher pointed out, again, there was a bathroom door that was in disrepair twelve years ago, and I guess it finally fell off the wall. There's still privacy there anymore, you couldn't lock it. This has been going on for years, and I'm not putting the blame on anybody other than the school board and us, because we should've looked at it closer, we should work together closer. I just think, as one of the board members said, the commission is gonna have a question. Why not take the COVID money and focus it at Jefferson Elementary School and get it renovated? Because when I toured Piedmont Elementary Schools, walking down the hallway with the principal, and I said, hey, this school looks nice, we can renovate it. She said, no, we need a new school. New is not always cost appropriate. I do take it serious about what we're doing tonight. That's all I have, Ms. Kerr.
Thank you. So we're voting on the amendment. Sir?
Could you or Mr. Reed reread?
I will reread.
Because it's rather lengthy.
I will. So what we're voting on is the amendment to the motion, and I'm gonna read the amendment as Commissioner Reed has presented. He moved to amend that County Commission make the following recommendation as follows to the Jefferson County School Board. County Commission of Jefferson County requests of the Jefferson County School Board that all COVID-19 relief funding that is available for school repair and renovation be used, projects completed and expenses accounted for prior to making any funding request for the building of a new school or the renovation of existing schools. We further request that any available funding be expended first on the schools with the greatest needs and that fit the highest priority needs as identified by the school system architects in the system-wide assessment, needs assessment. This motion should also be considered as a records request by the County Commission for all documents pertaining to COVID-19 relief funding, any grant funding, or other funds that may be appropriate and available for school building, renovation, and repair. A request for documentation that demonstrates available funding for school building repairs and renovation. That is the amendment.
So for clarification, is it's a recommendation? Because we can't tell them that they have to do it in one.
It is a recommendation in the first line.
And then for the, another clarification, does this mean they can only proceed on one project based on allocation, or how does that work?
First, it says schools prior, first on the schools with the greatest.
It said that they, all of those funds have to be expended prior to any ask for any money. So if it takes two or three years to do that, I'm asking for clarification on that. It has to, because two thousand and twenty, did you say two thousand and twenty-four, Dr. Johnston?
For ESER three.
For ESER three, and two thousand and twenty-three for ESER two. So those are the two big ones, really, you're dealing with. So if you do that and you're, you're three, two and three years out, does that mean that if that recommendation is taken up by the school board and they accept it, they have to wait till the last dollar is spent prior to asking for any funding for anything?
I don't think it really says that. I think that if, you know, if we're willing to work together and see progress taking place.
I'm asking if it says the, it says that all funding has to be done prior to that. And since there's, since you're two to three years out, are we, is that what you're looking at? I mean, that's what the motion, the way the chairman read.
That's, that's the way it reads, but... I'm sorry, what'd you say?
So your question is, if I can summarize, all COVID money, relief money, grant money must be expended and used on a project prior to a request?
If they were to accept the recommendation, that's what I'm saying, is that, it's in part or in whole, or, I mean, but that's pretty, it's a pretty lengthy motion. You kind of use sixty-four grandons on that. I am, and I'm just saying it encompasses a lot of. I don't mean any, Mr. Reed, I do not mean any disrespect. What I'm saying is it covers a broad spectrum.
I understand that, but they don't even know what they're gonna spend on, what they wanna spend on Piedmont. So we need to see what they're gonna spend for the school with the most need, and that is Jefferson Elementary School. And then we can go from there. We can have discussion at that point.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. It says, that recommendation says it has to be, last dollar has to be expended prior to them asking for.
Yes, that's what it says. That's what it says, yes.
We will be voting on the amendment as stated. So at this time, if you're in favor of the amendment, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And Mr. Poppers, uh, the vice is deceased. Motion to amend fails, we're back to the original motion. The original motion is to twenty million, twenty million for a new Jefferson Elementary. Motion by Thomas, second by Solomon, request to speak, let's get it up there. Terry Doppler?
Chairman, just as a point of order, if I may, if it's less than wrong, can we start at six minute clock? We veil citizens to three minutes of private proceedings, we need to be explicit. I'll ask starting with me. Been a lot of discussion about needs in previous meetings and even tonight. And it's been frequently said that we can execute this project without a tax increase. So that's a couple things I'd like to comment on. Some of y'all in here are gonna agree with my comments, maybe some won't, but I feel like I owe everyone an explanation whether or not I support the project. Some of my thoughts and a lot of the thoughts from the people I represent. Property taxes, I'll start with that. The notion we can spend twenty million dollars for this project without a property tax increase, as we discussed tonight, is based on the debt service line item of the budget. Our debt payment starts to drop off in two thousand and twenty-four. And I mention that just to note, this is two thousand and twenty-one, so that's three years from now before our debt payment actually starts dropping off. But I agree, we're in a lot better, healthy financial position I've seen in a while. And I agree that we're willing to commit ourselves to the same level of annual debt payments as we have now for many more years. And we can say we did this project without increasing our debt payments, which counts, as I stated earlier, twenty cents of the property tax rate. Again, debt service is on one line item of the total budget. So if we, if this project is approved and we encumber ourselves with additional debt, it could prevent us from moving funds from debt service to other parts of the budget in the future, which could prevent or stave off property tax increases due to inflation and operational costs et cetera. So in summary, on property taxes, the property tax rate is set each year to obtain a balanced budget so that revenue equals expenses and debt obligations are included in those expenses. Therefore, if this project is approved, then if at any time during the life of the thirty-year bond, a property tax increase is required to balance the budget, then I contend this project is part of the reason for the tax increase along with everything else in the budget. If we were sitting here tonight talking about, we had a bad run down jail that some people talked about. If we were talking about spending forty million dollars for a jail tonight, we said we could do it without a property tax increase. And then next year, we had to build a new school. I don't think it's fair to say jail didn't cause property tax increase because the school did, and the school did just because one got funding before the other. Wheel tax, been mentioned, as stated, our wheel tax could save the twenty-five dollar resolutions. The original, our first wheel tax had sunset language in it that read, "For the time of Jefferson County School Bonds issued in nineteen eighty-three, or for fifteen years, whichever is longer." It was replaced or renewed in nineteen ninety-nine via Resolution ninety-nine dash eleven without a specific sunset or expiration date, but language which reads, "The herein levy tax shall be used solely and exclusively for construction and renovation of the schools within Jefferson County School System or for the retirement of school bonds issued for such purpose and for no other reason." So that means as long as we have school debt, we're likely gonna have to continue to have that first wheel tax. So in essence, issuing a thirty-year bond extends that wheel tax thirty years. The second twenty-five dollar wheel tax was Resolution two thousand and fifteen oh five, passed in March two thousand and fifteen in six states. Proceeds of the motor vehicle previous tax herein levy shall be used to repay interest and principal on any and all debt obligations of the county, whether secured or unsecured. Section eleven states an old motor vehicle previous tax shall be levied in accordance with this resolution on or after April first, the expiration date is top third or so. I don't know if the commission that's in office in two thousand and twenty-four will need that to extend that or not to cover the debt service, but it's a possibility. Sales tax, yeah, we anticipated a sixteen to seventeen percent decrease in sales tax due to COVID-19, but we experienced a sixteen to seventeen percent increase. So let's ask why? Maybe part of it's federal stimulus money. So those who were working and continue to receive paycheck, federal stimulus money basically for some extra spending. I've heard people say because of COVID concerns, they didn't take the vacation in the past year because they didn't wanna travel, so they spent their vacation money on home improvement projects with state again. Unemployment rate got a four hundred dollar per week boost. So I know there are folks who were making more unemployment than what they were working. So real quickly, before I run out, the Lewis Group evaluation says that current school capacity is at seventy-two percent. And I know this isn't popular for some folks in here, but if you close Jefferson Elementary and rezone, we're at seventy-seven percent capacity wide. So based on the numbers in the Lewis Group proposal, there are some options, albeit not popular with some folks, to rezone, utilize Patriot Academy different, and et cetera. So there's options to not have to spend seventeen to twenty million dollars to build a new school or renovate at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bales?
That'll be real short and sweet. My wife works for the county, but it does not affect how I vote on this. They tell us a ten percent difference between renovating the building that you have no warranty on. And they said my. And they said my last, as long as a roof does, or over, or a new building for ten percent more, it's no brainer to me. That's all I got.
Mr. Scarlett?
My wife also works for the county. It has no effect on what my vote or opinion is on here. We've talked about the math, the nursing home, eight million dollars, two million overrun. Twice that, sixteen million. Twice the overruns, four million. That looks close to twenty million dollars, they same amount of overrun.
Mr. Snodgrass.
Couple of questions and comments here, Dr. Johnson. Just for clarification, we need to toss that out in October two thousand and nineteen study. For Jefferson Elementary School. The reason I asked that question is because the past several weeks, I've been doing a lot of research based on that document, trying to understand the seventy-six percent increase in renovation cost.
I would not toss that out because they fulfilled the letter and scope of the work, which was professionally bid out. And they received that and then they were hired to do that service. So I mean, they fulfilled their scope of work. Uh, but I think everybody that was in that room knew what they were looking at that night. I mean, uh, even on the interior, you know, it was very plain in this very room, they said it was, um, based on square footage. And the light, basically, what we would call in today's world, light renovation compared to what now we're looking at is heavy. So I mean, they they completed the initial direction to give the board a pointed direction to see what direction to go in.
So relative to apples to apples, it's nowhere near the scope of work, the seventeen million, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Just so you know, that caused a lot of work and research for the library, so. That was a major hangup for me because I couldn't walk that. You did a great job, answered some questions for me, which I assume you answered them. I'm clear on that. And then, uh, next, for me, I did tour Jefferson Elementary School and Mr. Doug back on, I think, March twelfth or so. You know, I still have trouble walking the cost. If I go out to any, especially in the White Pine community or anywhere else, I've got to be able to say Y seventeen, Reno, nineteen for new, okay? I don't have a comfortable number yet. That's just where I'm at. But what I can tell folks is it looks just like the White Pine school that was shut down thirty-something years ago. So that's, that's how I communicate the condition of the school. I'll share this too. He took us down to Boiler Room and just like my third grade trip in Miss Wise's class. It is really bad. Personally, I have no interest in a renovation. I don't want that logistics burden on the teachers, on the school. That's my preference. Can it be done? Certainly. I mean, we can put people on the move. We can work around logistics in the school. We can move lunches. That's been done. It was done at the White Pine School recently. We advocate for people to do that. But for me, it is time to move forward. Thoughts of giving this clear information, we're financially stable to do that, no tax increases. But I need a document that I can clearly walk and communicate to anyone in the community that asks for it.
And Skanska, I feel like provided a document, but we we can try to make one that's a.
Well, we addressed that since you brought it up. They did a, I'd give you an A plus on the itemization of the renovation cost. I will say an F, but I give you maybe a C on the very last page of your presentation where you didn't break, you need to itemize. My opinion is you need to itemize that fourteen million, just like you did the renovation cost. And we did an apples, almost apples to apples document.
Uh, if I may, on the food, you you just mentioned the food service. I know that before when food was being transported around, if I'm not mistaken, they had to use other employees to pull them off task, including some of the maintenance guys. So I'm kind of, can catch twenty-two if we want them in there fixing doors or delivering lunches. So I just, not everybody may know that, but that was, you know, one of the things that was used there. And according to Mr. Doug, you're unaware of a door that's in need of.
That's correct.
But you pointed out to me, and we'll have to fix for the end of the way, so we'll fire guns.
One more to lighten it up a little bit. These new schools will not be termite free, right? They will still come in.
If we can, I'm going into different line of work, we can get rid of all termites. Uh, I'll say this, uh, there was a termite issue months ago, and the termite company did come out and look at the issue, and what they found was evidence. It's where the gym floor was soft and you could tell. But they did not find live columns. So what was reported last Monday of termites, that had not an issue that had not been dealt with. It was just when they came before, they said there's no need to treat it. Now, we can't even find proof of live. They just found the damage. Is that saying that correctly? And then they treated that this past Saturday. So again, over the last few years, I understand everybody's concern. We're gonna take care of buildings the best we can. Uh, I know that in the packet I put in there, you know, where we are on money and those kind of things. And and may I just say this, and I'll sit down. You know, if we, if this board is asking for a building at forty years old, both these construction manager and architect have said a new building will be about fifty years. Jefferson Elementary has not had a major renovation like the high school had a few years back, to which that then pushed its lifespan out. You know, obviously, if at year forty, we're asking for something, you know, we didn't, we didn't do a good job or as good as we could have. We're in year sixty-three. So whoever's been in there since forty to sixty-three has paid for that sin. And, uh, you know, it's past what the life, predicted life of a new building without another major renovation.
Just one, one more, because I heard some new numbers tonight. Lewis's document from two thousand and eighteen guarantees a minimum of fifty years' life. Last time we said closer minus fifty years. Tonight, I've heard seventy-five years two times. What can we communicate?
I I don't think you heard seventy-five from from this.
I know.
But but the bones of the school, that's not to say you wanted to renovate or put new roofs on or whatever, but you, you have a good base to start with. I mean, this school is just state or right now, they're over seventy-five years old. They're still in good shape, but they can't make major renovations there.
So it's just here, say.
Ms. Hefling.
Question for Dr. Johnson.
Yes, ma'am.
If you closed Jefferson Elementary knowing people get really upset when their kids get rezoned, could you give me a brief look what you think it would look like for the county if you closed Jefferson Elementary versus all the students?
I love them dearly. Let's be clear, they'll close it, not me. Uh, we'll give them credit. If that were to happen, you get, you're gonna affect multiple schools. So let's just pretend right now again, and I think Doug would amend this. The capacity rate that was mentioned came off building plans. That does not, and that's when they were doing the needs assessment. Uh, we went back and I shared with this group a couple of meetings ago on the capacity of buildings based on what the principals say. They they can literally hold to make academic program happen, uh, in twenty twenty-one versus when those schools were built some over the last several decades. So theoretically, I can paint you a little picture. If we take four hundred and forty students at Jefferson Elementary and close that school, we can't just pick them all up and take them somewhere else. Talbot right now is at two hundred and fifty-two kids. They're basically can hold ten, fifteen, twenty-five or kids, something like that, and still meet academic programming. So, uh, let's go the other direction. Uh, you basically would be looking at moving all of New Market to Rush Strong. There is a chance if you did that, that the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade of Rush Strong would then have to go to Jefferson Middle. Uh, that would take care of about three hundred and eighty kids of the Jefferson Elementary. It's what New Market could probably hold and still do academic programming. You take the additional sixty students of Jefferson Elementary sent in towards Talbot, they can only take ten or fifteen of those or twenty. So that means those kids go there. Twenty or thirty or forty kids from Talbot now get shifted down either to White Pine, which also has its issues with space, and Mount Hore. Mount Hore is at five to eighty-nine, they can only go to about six. So then you're gonna take those fifty down. They're gonna be sent to Piedmont, and you're sending quite a few kids from Piedmont on out to Rush Strong as well. But other than that, we'll get it done in just a day or two. Won't be a big problem. But but I have looked at that because I think it's gonna displace about nine hundred families.
Would you have any room for growth at all since we're growing all over the county?
You, that would push them all up to above the eighty-five percent range or between eighty and eighty-eight percent of capacity. And like I say, you just place several families if that's what that body was to decide to do.
Mr. Bird.
Stay right there.
Yes, sir.
You made a comment. What what shape would you say Jefferson County High School's in right now?
Uh, Jefferson County High School's undergoing a major renovation, and I think it, you know, I would be, I would align myself and yield to the experts of consistency of where it scored in the ranks, say, we didn't, we didn't do that. So I would ask them to put that in there. But I mean, the anticipation is with proper maintenance and upgrades, again, like Mr. Scott, you just said, you know, it could be that we have to, uh, come back and and do something to push that out. But I mean, that school is is in good shape right now.
But they did a total remodel.
They did.
I don't think anybody's really planned on a three and a half million dollar band-aid. I know my feelings was a total gut and total remodel of it, and the price we were given on that was eight to nine million dollars. We talked about this before. That was a total remodel, and I did tour in August. And in August, they knew about this, they knew about the gym, not the termites, but they knew the cracks in the ceiling. They showed me, you could see the foundation problems our way through the office. So when they gave us that eight to nine, this is where I'm having a problem. When they gave us that price, eight to nine million dollars to a total debt, total remodel, and I'm not talking about patchwork. No one's talked about that as far as I know. It is eight to nine million dollars, okay? They they knew then about the structural problems that were up there in the office. They knew about the gym. I mean, really used caulk to try to fix that. I mean, it was ridiculous, what we tried to plug a block wall with caulk. But, uh, I, like I said, I feel like the price has been highly inflated on the remodel uh, to get it to seventeen and a half million dollars since we already knew the issues. You can't say a new gym. They knew the gym was in bad shape. You can't say the structure because they knew that when they gave us this eight to nine million dollar price. Unless they just halfway through together, they take it out.
As I recall, they gave three point six on the exterior of those issues that are identified. And then again, they gave each school a square foot adjustment for what we would call now call kind of a light Reno. Uh, but also I think in public meeting said with the board, and it might have even been the meeting Mr. Reed was in as well, uh, or one of the meetings he was in, I just don't remember the timeline of that, but they said, "We know there's some structural issues or we wouldn't have those cracks." Uh, they're not the one that did caulk. That predates even even, you know, probably my rival. But but they said, "Without further structural analysis, we don't know what to the extent of that repair would be." But I I was thinking that second number almost matched the the first number of three point six and then like three point seven on top of it, get somewhere up around seven. But but either way, uh, you know, again, they they were very transparent to say it was gonna take additional structures. And if you want him to, I guess Doug could explain that better.
He can.
Again, as Dr. Johnson said, there was no structural analysis done on that building as far as it said. Yes, there were clearly structural issues with that building. But until a structural engineer goes in and evaluates, number one, what's causing that problem, and number two, what it's gonna take to remediate that problem, there's no way to put a price tag on that.
Well, then why did you give, put a price tag on?
We didn't.
Eight to nine, eight to nine, we asked for three prices, new bill, band-aid, and total remodel. We were given three and a half, eight point nine, and then at the time fifteen. It's our seventeen million, was it with new bill? Anyway, that went up to twenty-seven, come back to twenty. We were given those three prices.
The the eight to nine number was never a total renovation number.
Well, that's what we asked for, and that was the price, what we were given for a total renovation. That's what I was given for a total renovation. So why did it, yeah, why did it jump that much?
Because the the number that is now being given as a total renovation number is in fact a total renovation. As Dr. Johnson said, we identified five or six bullet items that needed to be addressed immediately. And then we had a per square foot number that we applied across the system to all the buildings to say, "In addition to that, we'll do some cosmetic things, we'll do some other things." That's what got us to that seven to eight.
So it wasn't a total re renovation then?
It never was.
Then why was it presented that way?
It was not just that.
Yes, it was. I mean, that's what they told us it was, so.
Ms. Bird, I'm not sure if you just misunderstand. We took the needs assessment number as the repair. We took the Skanska number as the Reno, and then we took the new bill as they, we we thought we did give you all three of those numbers. But we started as the band-aid or the repair based on the needs assessment.
Mr. Blais.
Okay, Dr. Johnson, one more time.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Don't worry.
What's the current capacity for our school system? How many students?
Uh, boy, I wish, I want to go grab it, grab it up, go comment. Somewhere closer to about seventy-eight hundred to do academic programming, and I'll be happy to email that out. I I don't recall, but again, if you take it off paper, uh, what what was in the needs assessment, they just went off plans and those things. But like where it may say thousand students at one school to do academic programming and meet the, you know, uh, E L L students, special ed students, the CDC, occupational therapy and all that stuff, it may only really be seven hundred.
Why do we have a, why do we have a capacity if it's not the real number? What's the real, I mean?
I can't help what they put in the capacity when they built the school.
Okay, here's, here's your all's numbers. If you gave out a record request back in March, early April, there's ten thousand students. Right now, as of then, it's three thousand nine hundred and ninety-three students on your all's data. That was in person schools. So I don't know.
I have to check.
That's forty percent.
I have to. I'd have to check that. I think it's, uh, being either misinterpreted or it was miscommunicated. We'll double check that to get check the numbers. But as of today, give or take a handful of kids, there's sixty-eight, fifty or so currently in our school.
Still.
Mr. Blais.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to speak to a few things. I hope I can get it done, and if not, I'd like to have the same latitude as my colleagues did previously. Um, I want to speak to maintenance issues and any, uh, capital improvements at Jeff Elementary in just a second, and then I want to shift to some funding, uh, data. Prior to two thousand and twelve, thirteen, we didn't have a maintenance management system in school system. Subsequent to that, we did put one in place. So prior to that, I don't have any data. But subsequent to that, um, since two thousand and eleven, we, or two thousand and thirteen, rather, the school system has processed twenty, a little over twenty-seven thousand maintenance orders. Of those, and they had thirteen campuses. So that would come out to about two thousand and eighty per campus or seven point seven percent. Jeff Elementary received two thousand five hundred and seventy of those. Four hundred and eighty-four more than average, which is a twenty-three percent increase, which is what you would expect from an old building. As far as capital improvements go, uh, in recent history, for a sixty-three-year-old building, I guess, last ten to fifteen years would be recent history. Roof's been replaced, kitchen was remodeled, cafeteria windows were replaced, gym windows were replaced, and it had red lighting. So I bring those details forward because I'm concerned that people have the impression that somehow the school board or the school administration just abandoned Jeff Elementary and didn't do the things that they need to be done. I suspect that they took as good care of Jeff Elementary as they could with the resources they had. So now I want to speak to funding. In the seven, one forty-one, seventy-two, six twenty maintenance plan account, um, account, the non-payroll part of it, which is maintenance, repair buildings, maintenance, repair equipment, other contracted services, supplies and materials, maintenance equipment, those sorts of things. In two thousand and eleven, twelve, it was budgeted at nine, nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It dropped from that to eight hundred and fifty thousand. And it never got back to that number. In fact, it dropped many years, four years that it actually had any increase. But just in for inflation, we spent eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than we should have for maintenance in Jefferson County School Systems over that period of time. We were talking earlier tonight about the historically strong financial condition of the county. And I submit to you, the school system has been a significant portion of that. Why do I say that? Well, during that period of time, there were a lot of changes made to how the school system received funding. The capital projects funding that hasn't been given to the school for a number of years, about a half a million dollars a year, went to what? It was diverted. It went to debt service. So there was a half a million dollars a year beginning, I think, in two thousand and fifteen to now, that's not been spent in the school system because it was not available, and it had been made available prior to that. So you had nearly a million dollars in maintenance funding that wasn't available. You have capital projects funding that wasn't available. You have capital projects funding that wasn't available. Those were, those were local funds that were no longer provided because at the same time that was going on, tax collection, sales tax collection, that had previously, excess sales tax collection, they had previously been allocated for schools, were taken by and shifted in another direction. And no longer allowed to go to schools or all over in the fund balance so that they would have that for capital expenditures before they made even budgetary names for maintenance of that little campus. There was a significant curtailment in, in growth and local contribution to the schools over that period of time. So I bring this out because, you know, we are in a strong financial condition right now, and we can, according to what Scott has said, and what Langley said, and what many others have said, probably afford to incur this debt now. But we didn't get to that strong financial condition without the support of the school. They had to do, I was there, I was part of it, there had to be some significant efforts made to operate on the funding that they received, especially from local funds. And there were changes in state funds over that period of time. And, and I want to make one other comment about Jeff Elementary School. Fifty years plus or minus is what we were told for a school building. We've gotten sixty-three years out of this group. And that's with twenty years at three hundred more students than it actually was supposed to accommodate. So I, I know it's, it's got some challenges. But if you hadn't carried that much load extra, but beyond what you were built to carry, you probably need to experience some challenges as well. Back to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Scarlett.
Call for a question.
Call for a question. Anybody opposed to call for the question? Seeing no opposition, may proceed to vote. Motion is, Dr. Palmer, uh, was to, the motion is to approve twenty million dollars for a new Jefferson Elementary School. Is that how everybody understood it? Is that the way you understand? So motion is twenty million dollars for a new Jefferson Elementary School. If you're in favor of that, motion vote yes. If not, vote no. Motion favors eleven to eight. Other, Mr. Scarlett.
It appears that we are at an impasse. And, uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion. If I get a second, I'll speak to it. I want to offer the school board seventeen million, nine hundred thousand to address the school situation in Jefferson City. If this money's approved and the board accepts it, if this money's, this mon, this motion will be to approve the money, and if the board accepts it, then we'll move forward issuing the bonds. If they accept this, they're not to return for funding for this project. That's it. All in, all done.
I have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Bales.
Reason I want to make that motion, I mean, we're arguing over the money of how much it should be. I can't prove that the numbers are either good or bad. I assume they're good. I, I don't have, I'm not saying anything about you boys over here. I can't prove that. But we sit here and approve two more million for the nursing home on a nineteen to zero vote. That nursing home, as Mr. Rogers stated, their rates are based on overhead. That has to do, so the people in the county, and a large percentage of the people in the county has had family at Jefferson County Nursing. A lot of those are, they pay that back. So to say that the citizens of the county don't have to pay it because the nursing home pays it is not a, that's not a valid statement. And based on what they did, they had a little over eight million, they had a two million dollar cost overrun because of increases in building materials. The school said fifteen to sixteen million originally. That's twice eight million, twice what the, the nursing home was, and they're talking about twenty million. So if we're interested in saving money, seventeen million, nine hundred thousand, all in, all done. If they accept it, they got to solve the issues, I'm not telling them how. But they got to solve the issues and they don't come back for money on this project.
I have a motion and a second. Any requests to speak? Mr. Bales.
I don't know if anybody from the school board or the school system would comment to this, but I just feel you could try to meet the needs with that amount. I don't know how to answer.
Not seeing anybody else jump up.
I mean, I'd be at the pleasure of the board, and I mean, if that motion should pass, then that body would take up that for consideration of either what to do, what to mark off, or how to handle that accordingly. But then, like, I think the motion states that they would have to agree to accept that with the knowledge, as the motion, as I understood it, all in, all done. But they would have to decide on that.
So if they didn't accept it, then they come back, or they accept it and try to work with it?
Or change their motion.
Ms. Langley.
That was my question.
Other request to speak? Mr. Douglas.
Hi. Commissioner Scarlett, uh, your proposal is to give them seventeen point nine million dollars to solve the needs at Jefferson Elementary School. Do I understand this correctly?
They're to solve the needs at Jefferson City school situation. I don't care how they do it, they got to solve all the needs, all the problems they say they have. If they don't, we're out. They got to say, yes, we can. If they say, yes, we can, we issue the bonds.
I can get it before thirty in the morning, light it up for the lungs. Well, why do I feel like I'm kind of card leadership here? And I've had one card dude tell me twenty million is as low as we can go, and if he takes the seventeen nine, I, you know, you see where I'm coming from?
I understand. They don't have to accept it. If they say no.
I mean, ten point one million dollars is a lot of money to sit here and argue.
I'm just making an offer. If they take it and say they can address everything, then it's fine. If they say, no, we can't address that thing, I'm still going home, I'm hungry.
Mr. Bales.
Because if you don't get the car fixed or get it built or buy a new one, you're going to be walking.
Request to speak? Ms. Langley.
And if they can't meet the needs, and these are urgent needs, I don't care how, how lightly we try to paint this picture. If they can't meet them, and that building is deemed uninhabitable, then we are forcing our school board, and we commissioners, are forcing our school board to close Jefferson Elementary. And that is not satisfactory to the majority of citizens and parents in this county. And I know I don't know them all, but I can believe we gonna have us an uprising.
And rightly so.
Request to speak, seeing none. If you're in favor of the motion for seventeen point nine million to solve the needs at Jefferson Elementary, without the ability to, how'd you say it, request more funding for the, for that project?
They cannot come back and request more funding for this project. We're all in, all done, and they have, anyhow they solve it, they got to address all the needs. They can't leave part of them off, they can't say, oh, we, we're going to come back and get that later. They got to do the whole thing. When they say yes, they're committed. They went from being a chicken at breakfast to a hawk. Just not bought.
One of the black ones. I'm going to wait for, for yes, if you're opposed, for no. File fourteen to five. Motion to adjourn. Unless there's another motion, so. Yeah, you can. I hate to break a bad news to you, but the beer board has a meeting after this. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion second. Okay. Ms. Thomas says we're placing, put it over the next. Okay, Mr. adjourn. I'd call the beer board into.